Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order this meeting of the fourth of August 2022, City and National Planning Board. Can we get our roll call? When did you want to do the roll call? Maggie here?
Scott's gonna handle it.
Sure. Mayor Donches. Michael Peterson.
Here.
Scott Leclair.
Here.
Adam Barley.
Here.
Maggie Harper. June Karen.
Here.
Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger. Larry Hirsch.
Here.
Mark Meehan. Okay, so we have a quorum, six people.
Okay, so I'm gonna move on with some of our agenda. First up, I have approval of minutes. So for the board, we have some minutes from June 16th, 2022. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at those minutes? And wanna make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written or need amendments? Mr. Hirsch?
Move to accept as written.
Okay, so we have that motion to accept the 16 June 2022 minutes as written from Mr. Hirsch. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions?
None.
Okay, one abstention, Larry. So that motion passes. Okay. Communications?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the planning board. The following correspondence were received after your mailer was sent out. Case 822-0064, 7 Westbrook Drive, engineering comments from Joe Mandola, letter, August 3rd, 2022, a letter from Meridian, waiver letter, on July 8th, 2022. Next case, 821-0299, 301 and 302, that's 147 and 149 Temple Street, Joe Mandola, engineering comments. Next case, 822-0106, 15 Bartlett Avenue, this is the three lot subdivision, updated staff report dated August 2nd, 2022, email, fire comments, August 1st, 2022, and engineering comments from Joe Mandola, August 2nd, 22, letter. 822-0137, this is the Eldozer Road, Flatley, Shadow Brook, 49 lot subdivision, conservation subdivision. We have an updated staff report, August 3rd, 2022. We have an email from Fire, 832022, that's their sign off. Updated safety access exhibit is included, 812022, and engineering letter from Joe Mandola, 5122022. And that's it.
Okay, thanks. Any reports of committees, liaisons here, anybody on the board? Okay. So moving on, I'm gonna go ahead and read the procedure of the meeting first. So, procedure of the meetings and hearings are as follows. After each legal notice of conditional special use permit, site plan or subdivision plan is read by myself, the board will first determine if the application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. If we do take jurisdiction, a public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations, and the board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. Next, I'll ask for testimony from the audience. I'll first start asking if there's anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan. This will be the time for you to come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for record, and have time to express any of your concerns or questions you may have regarding the plan. I'll start with the audience here in person, and then I'll move to Zoom, so they're not ordered there. Next up, we'll have testimony from anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board will then ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant, and the applicant will be then given a rebuttal period, at which time they can respond to any of the concerns raised by the public testimony. After this has been completed, the public hearing will end, and the board will resume a public meeting, at which time we will deliberate and vote on the application that's in front of us. I'd ask that both sides keep their remarks as a subject at hand, not repeat what has already been said by others, and wanna make sure that everybody understands we wanna be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on our testimony presented and considering all applicable approval criteria established in our national revised ordinances for conditional special use permits, site plans, and subdivision plans. I'll thank everybody for their interest and attention, and if you do have a cellphone, please go ahead and make sure it's on vibrate. If you are online on Zoom, please make sure that you are muted at this time. Okay. First up on the agenda, old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Next, old business subdivision plans, case number 822-0064. This is Colin Brook Investment, owner, proposed lot line relocation. His property is located at 5 and 7 Westbrook Drive. This particular application was tabled for the May 19th, 2022 meeting. So for the board, first up for staff, is the applicant here and ready for any additional testimony at this point? Yes?
I believe he's in the audience, and we have somebody online as well.
Okay, excellent. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since I just came on to this group, and I just received all this information, and some of this has already been taking place, I think I need to recuse myself from this part of the meeting, because I don't think it's fair to be part of the total discussion. I'll make my notes and let you know later, but I think it's important that I recuse myself at this point in time if you have no objections.
Yep, no, that's up to you, and I think that's fine. Yep, so you can have a seat from the audience and then come back up.
I'll move forward.
Yeah, you can just leave it. Okay, so for the board, anybody had a chance to look at any of the additional information we have, or wanna make a motion to, we first have to take this off the table and essentially reopen the hearing for this application? Mr. Barley?
Mr. Chair, yes, I would make a motion that we remove old business, case number 822-0064, from the table to reopen the hearing.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Barley to reopen 822-0064. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor of taking it off the table?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That's unanimous, Larry. Okay, so we have the application off the table and hearing open, so we have someone from the applicant that wants to, and just a summary of, we had tabled, I think, to get more information regarding drainage than I can remember for this particular subdivision. Is there somebody from the applicant that wants to present that additional information?
I'm Trevor from Meridian, I'm on Zoom.
Yep, we can hear you. Okay.
Since the May meeting, you provided the engineering department with additional drainage analysis and updated site plan for this, the slot line adjustment, and Joe Mandola's left August 3rd is indicating, you know, the engineering department is in favor of the changes we've made in the analysis that we provided. So they are in favor of, comments are satisfied from that standpoint. So if there's any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, maybe I'll pass it over to Dan. Your department has had some time to take a look at the additional drainage information?
Yes, we have, Mr. Chair, and it was a little hard to hear on the Zoom, but Joe Mandola did issue a letter stating that engineering support signing and recording of the plans, they've satisfied all of the questions that we had relative to the plans and the drainage report.
Okay. So at this time, I guess I will, just to clarify, for the engineer, the waivers, it's still the same waiver, the one for physical features on the site within 1,000 feet that you're still looking for?
That one is still stands, and then the additional one that was submitted was for section 190-215, subsection B, item 1, waiver of the requirements to meet the pre and post runoff rates for the 10 years. You guys have a copy of that letter, and I can...
Yep, we do have that, yep.
Okay. It would be the two waivers, I believe.
Okay. And then just for staff, that waiver, that's the appropriate sections, 190, 215B?
Correct.
That you understand? Okay, and I assume the wording in the waiver will be similar to stipulation, original stipulations, Warren, with those words in there. Okay. All right, anybody from the board have any questions, additional questions for the applicant on this older case? Okay. Mr. Barley?
I would just say, you know, based on the review that's occurred and the comments from the applicant and then the affirmative indication from Joe Mandola, certainly the questions and concerns that I had on May 19th have been satisfied, so.
Okay, good. Any other questions of staff or the applicant by the board? No? At this point, I'll open up to the audience. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern? Come on up to the microphone. Remember to state your name and address for the record, please, and go ahead and let us know what your questions are or concerns are.
My question is, how much oil does 3 Westbrook drive?
Yep.
Is your joint property, is it down water?
Make sure you just get close enough to the mic. You can pull it up or pull it out if you need to, too. It's just that it doesn't pick up. I think that's better, yeah, just stay close to it.
So, the issue is, is the drainage on my property, is, is the joint property, you see in this, you can't see it very well, that street's pretty small, but that line is the trail that goes through this property.
Yep.
You know, the nerf map, right here down slope, and this is a pretty steep hill, and the water runs off there. I looked at that study, I'm an engineer myself, I looked at the court study, and there are some assumptions in there that are sort of mostly untrue about the soil type, you know, that that trail is compacted. It's not even that, you know, the contour lines are really different, sorry, the storms are...
He's just gotta change that for you.
Who turned it on?
Oh, I can hear it now.
Okay, let's do that again. So, I guess you're recording this. So, the trail is heavily compacted, it's not this pervious, you know, stuff that water comes out. The report said that the, I think the water flow out of all this is .01 cubic feet per second, which is a very, you know, a relatively small amount, although cubic feet per second is surprising. One cubic foot per second for an hour will fill a large swimming pool. So, as you can see, the contours, you know, that trail kind of follows the natural contours, except where it gets close, and it splits our properties right in half. If you can see that, that red line is sort of the, where the trail actually goes through our properties, and the water actually goes into my front yard from that trail because of the contours. It doesn't go to the street, it goes through my front yard out to the, to the manhole. But what I'm most concerned about is the runoff to my backyard. And if you, the next slide, please? There we go. So that's a picture of the trail going up, and that red line is basically the boundary between our two properties. Some trail is on the butter side, and to the right is my, my property, and you can see it's sloping towards my yard. It's not gonna flow down that red line to the street, it's gonna go into my yard. And the next slide, please? So this is, yeah, there we go. So this is a little bit further up the trail, you can see there are some really large trees here, that one on the top left is like three foot diameter, which is like 150 years old, it's a massive tree. That's actually where the line, you know, that's basically 10 feet from the property line. That's where they would start their, you know, footings for the foundation. So they're gonna have to disturb the trail. To the right of that trail, you can see it's steep, that goes right to my backyard. If they mess with that trail, the water's gonna go into my backyard from that trail. And as you can see, that trail is compacted, it's hard as rock. And that, it's a fairly large trail, it's used by everybody. I don't know what the exact plans are for that, but, you know, that tree that I noted there is, is three foot diameter, and in order to put the foundation near that tree, they're obviously gonna cut it down, and those roots go probably 20 feet onto my property, and they're gonna have to dig all that up. I don't know what the plans are, they don't say. So the next slide. So you can see from my backyard here, yeah, there we go. So this is looking out my window along the back, and you see the bulkhead on the ground there, and that's the trail up that slope is where the trail, and if the water comes down that slope, it goes like right into my basement. So it doesn't flow around my yard to go to the culvert, it goes through my basement to the culvert, or to the manhole. So, and just a few comments about the study, you know, to me, I'm an engineer, it's all about assumptions and what you get out of it, the analysis, you don't always question that, but you question the assumptions primarily. And so the next slide. So, you know, they did sort of a 24-hour being the maximum, but really, the real critical thing, and this is what happens, is in the summer, in the summer during a really massive downpour that happens just in a few minutes, the water comes rushing down there and ends up, as long as I keep the leaves out of that trail, it'll come down and go into my front yard. If I haven't swept those leaves out, it'll go into my backyard. And, but the assumption in the study was that it would be .01 cubic feet per second coming out of this thing. And the way they drew it, you know, the real critical thing is what happens in a five-minute storm, not 24 hours, because it's a massive downpour, and that's a much higher number. And so I estimated, just from the driveway alone, that it would be more like .12 cubic feet per second, just out of the driveway, of the impervious driveway, not to mention the roof and all the other systems in there. But the study, you know, it's a computer program, they don't really list exactly what's going on and all that stuff. You know, you kind of have to trust you did it right, but it doesn't pass the smell test. So, and then the next one, the next slide? It kind of shows, I guess, some assumptions that they made in the study. I guess the dotted line in the middle there is where they think the water goes, and it kind of shows it going, you know, between our properties and not onto my front lawn. And that isn't what happens, it's patently wrong. The real condition that I'm most concerned about is in the spring, when the ground is rose and it's impervious everywhere, the water just runs off, and that's the real condition that needs to be addressed, and the part that I'm, you know, most concerned about. So I would move that, you know, that you don't approve this waiver, because, you know, I think they really haven't addressed the issues and the effect it would have on my property. So, and I guess, you know, there were other issues, too, so, you know, we've gone through this once before, so.
Right.
But I just thought it would be useful to see a photo of what it actually is.
Any questions for the board? Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? Come on up.
Yeah, this is there.
Hang on, I have someone here in person, so just hang on a minute, I'll get to you.
My name is Paula Lockhead, and I live at 4 Westbrook Drive, which is across the street from Tony. In our little enclave there, with Tony's house and our house and the neighbor at the corner of Fair Haven and Westbrook, there are already three drainage culverts. In that little area, there are three, because primarily what happens with the pathway that Tony is speaking about is, that pathway tends to be the drainage sluice way for all of the ball fields up at Sunset Heights. Sunset Heights School is right up behind Tony's house, and the drainage comes running right down that pathway, and if it misses Tony's yard, then it comes across the street and into our yard, because our basement has been flooded on many occasions because of that incredible downpour from a sudden, you know, a sudden storm. And those three drainage culverts just can't accommodate the amount of rainfall or precipitation. My other concern is if there is a solid driveway within that area, you're taking up some of that absorption ability, and more, more drainage will also ensue, so.
Okay, all right, thanks, appreciate it. Anybody else here in person wishing to speak in opposition or concern? Okay, I think we had somebody online, go ahead.
Well, first I'd ask Trevor if he could please mute his phone, because it's causing a lot of, a lot of issues with the, yeah, because we keep seeing you every time the volume goes off and on. So I just wanted to say I am in support of the folks who have just spoke, because, yes, we had...
Could you just give real quick your name and address, please?
Yeah, Aaron O'Malley, Westbrook Drive.
Thanks.
And, and so we just wanna say we are, we are not in alignment with the fact that this will not cause issues within the neighborhood, and as I mentioned before, I think there's still a sticking point about the setback of the home.
Okay, all right. Any other comments or questions? All right. Thanks. Anybody else online with any questions or concerns for the plan? All right, anybody? Go ahead.
My name's Glenn Daly, I'm at 10 Westbrook Drive.
Go ahead, yep.
I just have a comment about the frontage. It looks like the frontage of the back line, lot line of the house is about 84 feet, and we require 90 feet of frontage, so in order to get that 90 feet, they've had to ride the setback line to achieve the, I think it's like 93 feet, and I just wanna bring that to the attention of the planning board, and let you know that this is gonna be the smallest frontage in the entire neighborhood by quite a bit. I think most are about 135 feet, so that's all.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern? Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Okay, all right. At this point, I'll give the applicant an opportunity to speak on additional information regarding what the upholders have talked about, and I'd remind them it's still about drainage, the condition of the trail, the information used in the report, and then some, this question about setback and frontage.
Hey, is the board supposed to be muted? We can't hear you.
No, we're not, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not muted, I guess. So go ahead, is it Trevor? Yep. The applicant?
Turn on your mic.
We can't hear you.
Yeah, we have, we have no sound from the board coming through Zoom.
Is the speaker muted?
Maybe switch mics.
Speaker's muted.
Yeah.
It's working.
The applicant is muted, he's unmuted.
Yep. There we go, we can hear you.
So, I guess in response to some of the upholders, it's my understanding that as part of the development of the parcel, the applicant is not intending to alter the trail in any way, and they're going to abide by the setback on the plan, so there shouldn't be any appreciable impact to the surface configuration of the trail itself.
Trevor, we're having a lot of trouble hearing you here, you're going in and out.
Yeah, he doesn't seem to hear us.
No, he's not muted.
In regards to the stormwater concerns, while I understand that the short...
Turn off his auto leveling microphone feature in.
...are, it's not the...
Trevor, Trevor, can we ask you to stop for a second?
...standards of the city that were, where meet, the city standard are the, is the 10-year, 24-hour storm event, and that's what we're, that was...
Can you send him a message on Zoom?
When it's iced over, it kind of falls into that same scenario, where that's not typically what we're, what we're designing for. You know, we're designed for events that are, you know, common, and the numbers show that, one, that there's very little runoff during a typical, a typical storm event, and furthermore, based on the contours that, I believe it was Mr. O'Malley, all of that drainage area is not, there's very little we can actually do about that. It's not really within the scope of... And couple that with the fact that, you know, the homes along, along Westbrook, I mean, the water's gotta go somewhere, and, you know, the homes at that spot, that's where one of the kind of low points in the road, why those storms would put there. You can't hear much on this lot.
I sent him a message, but, Trevor, we can't hear you.
Yep, it's a table.
We missed most of it.
Yeah.
And he has no idea.
Yeah, and he can't hear us either. I think...
He can't hear you.
He's experiencing low band, suggesting turn off his video so that the signal doesn't get interrupted and cut off.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have to see you.
Has he turned off his auto leveling feature in audio settings of Zoom?
He doesn't seem to be able to hear us.
He cannot hear anything here, maybe anyone?
No, I saw like several of them can't hear you.
Should we drive over there and tell them?
Yeah, I don't know. Why don't...
Did anyone else notice properly?
Yeah, maybe. I think what I'm gonna do is just call a recess here for, I'm gonna call it 10 minutes right now, so I'm gonna go ahead and do that. I'm gonna go ahead and call us out of recess, so I'm gonna go back, before recess, we were talking with, I think it was Trevor, and I guess, Trevor, if you're still there, I'm gonna ask you to, the representative for the applicant to unmute and kind of start again on the responses to the, to the upholders, because we didn't hear much of it, sorry.
Okay now?
Yeah, I can hear you, yep.
So, I guess I'll just start from the top.
Yes.
In Mr. O'Malley's little presentation, he did identify that there is a, there's a large drainage area that basically directs stormwater down to the common lot line, essentially 3 and 3 Westbrook, and then our parcel. The development of our parcel is, is in no way going to affect that drainage area. I mean, it's where the contours of the land direct the water, and the development of this parcel isn't changing that, that, even if we were to capture everything from this lot, so the scope of our development, it's kind of out of the realm of us being able to do anything about that. In regards to the concern about altering the trail...
Yeah. Yep.
You guys can still hear me?
You're cutting in and out a little bit, can you try and talk real close to your mic and pretty loud?
Yep. The applicant does not intend to alter the surface configuration of the trail in any way with the dwelling that would be put on this lot. And.
That's been impressed multiple times.
The trail is going to remain as it is currently constituted and will not be altered. In regards to the concern about the short and intense storm events, while I agree that that is, those are events that happen, the city ordinance specified 10-year, 24-hour storm event, which is a more of a prolonged, consistent. So we are not designing to the five-minute, you know, int.
In that regard.
And in regards to the frozen conditions, again, that's not typically something that we are designing to, and I understand that the trail would essentially become a packed-down icy conduit of water during the freeze of the winter. And the development of this parcel is not going to alter.
We're going to use the trail, it's going to get packed down.
Sorry, you're cutting out again, yep.
In regards to the other concerns from the abutters, about the inability of the storm drains to convey the water, that's kind of out of the purview of this project as well. We're not proposing anything to alter that. Water's going to continue to flow how it does, both before and after the development. That's all I've got to say on that, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Can you talk about the setback and the frontage?
Oh, yes, so the frontage on the, there's no frontage on the rear of the parcel, we're meeting the frontage requirement along the front, along the roadside of the parcel. And then the parcel complies with the rest of the zoning requirements in this. So while the rear of the lot is not as wide as the dictates, it doesn't.
He cut out.
You guys hear me? I'm really sorry.
Yeah, I can hear you now, yep, go ahead. Sorry.
The short of it is, we meet the frontage requirement and the area requirement. Rear of the lot is not required to be the same or greater.
Okay. All right, at this point I'll ask the board, do you have any questions for the applicant? Go ahead, Mr. Varley.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you, and in particular since we obviously had some difficulty catching all of that still, maybe if I could just summarize on the drainage and confirm that I'm stating this accurately. So, what I heard from you is that you acknowledged that there may be some drainage issues for some of the abutters based on the existing conditions, but your position is that this project will not alter, will not alter in a material way, the existing conditions, so it's not going to make that existing condition any worse. Is that sort of a fair assessment?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, other questions by the board? Mr. Peterson?
Yes, the abutter mentioned that the three-foot diameter pine tree on your property may be removed and that would affect the terrain. Are there any plans for that three-foot diameter tree?
Not specifically that I am aware of. Based on that photograph, it looked to be, it was, I would say, within 10 feet or so of the trail. I guess if Jay is there, he may be able to speak to that a little more than I could as far as if the plan is to remove. I'm sure exactly where on the site and how deep into the property that, how close the lot line is.
Sorry, dropped out, so.
Okay, so, whatever the answer is, I never really understood it, just wanted to let you know that.
Yeah, he referred to, who I'm assuming is the developer, Jay. Maybe if you want to, do you want to come up and address that issue? So hopefully it'll be easier.
State your name and address for our record, please.
Jason Lianese, Collinbrook Investments, 11 Macintosh Lane, Bedford, New Hampshire. As far as the tree goes, I'm really not sure, it will probably have to go. It's kind of in the middle of the lot, right on the setbacks, it's not in the setbacks, so.
So, in your opinion, will removal of that tree affect the flow of water onto the abutters' property?
I mean, I went out there in a torrential rainstorm and I videoed it on my phone, there's no water coming down that path. I walked all the way, you could see the water running down the street like it's designed to, and I walked down the path and videoed it, no water comes down the path. As Mrs. Royal said at the first meeting, I have a retaining wall all along the back of the property that keeps any water coming from the school property down. I'm assuming they don't, and any of the water coming from the back property, the school's property, probably runs down into their lawn and into their basement. You know, when they first came up, they said that my lot was 10 feet higher than theirs. On the plan, it's four. The lockheed's across the street, water's running down that path across the street and down into their land, like, you know, usually I just stand here, sit there, let the engineers do the talking, don't say much, but they're just trying to say anything that they can to get this to not pass. My partner sat here.
Can you talk to the microphone?
My partner sat here last time and they said, we already got this tabled once, they're just trying to jam a house in where one doesn't belong. And that's not what we're doing, these are conforming lots to the city's specifications, and that's it. There's nothing else to it, there's no water running down, I did a drainage study, and all they're doing is trying to delay the process to cost me thousands of dollars and not be able to build. I don't think it's right, but.
Okay, thank you. For the board, any other questions for the applicant or their engineer? While we're in the hearing, any questions for staff? While we're in the hearing? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing.
Somebody raised his hand back there.
Yeah, we're already beyond public comment, I can't keep opening up public comment, so. We're actually up to closed hearing now, so it would have to be a motion by the board to open up the hearing again. If somebody on the board wants to do that, go ahead. Okay, all right, so we're in the meeting, so we've got this application in front of us, we've heard it a couple of times, we certainly have some questions regarding drainage. City engineer has reviewed it. You know, it seems like there's a few differing opinions here on what's going on, but I think, you know, it's our job to kind of weigh those decisions, or weigh those opinions and make a decision, so. I'm looking for any comments the board might have at this time, or things you want to talk about while we're in the meeting here. Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I'll just speak again to the drainage, it is one of the reasons why we asked to be tabled last time because we just received the report, the report indicated very little runoff, but the public testimony was significantly different than that. We did review the report, you know, the assumptions aren't made, you could make some slightly different ones perhaps, but I believe the applicant is correct, like, this isn't designed for the heaviest storm, most severe storm, that's not typical, and most of the area, as described, is area outside of their property limits that drains to this area, so I kind of view it as there's an existing drainage issue, this proposal doesn't remedy that, it doesn't necessarily solve that problem, but it also doesn't exasperate it, is kind of the conclusion we came to.
Okay, Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, the way I, that's what I understand to be the testimony from the applicant, again, city engineering staff has reviewed this. I don't doubt the abutters that there is an existing drainage issue, but, you know, we see this in a number of applications where there's an existing condition that is of concern legitimately to the abutters, but it really is not impacted by the project at all, and I don't think it's appropriate to try to put the burden on the applicant here or in other contexts to say you have to address this issue that exists, when, you know, we've got, you know, testimony from their engineer and from the city engineering staff that this is not going to, you know, worsen the existing condition, so.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, just further, if there are existing issues with city culverts, that sort of thing, if they're not taking the water, if they're plugged, you know, water can't get to them, whatever, just reach out to Public Works and we'll, we have a lot on our plate, obviously, but we'll do the best we can to remedy them, so I encourage you to do that, just file a complaint with us about this specific drainage issue and we'll work to address it the best we can.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, all right, somebody, I would make a comment, anything to do with this, there is the waiver for the stormwater management. Any comments on that waiver, Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, just further, it is just a small technical increase, it's a .01 CFS increase in the pre-imposed calculation that they have, so that, you know, to be technically correct, we asked them to submit that waiver request.
And so, just to clarify, is that, is it a waiver to allow for the increase?
Yeah, a waiver from the requirement that there be no increase.
Be no increase, okay.
All right, any other discussion by the board? Anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve Old Business, case number 822-0064, Collinbrook Investments LLC located at 5 and 7 Westbrook Drive. And that would be with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO, section 190-138G. And that will be with a total of seven stipulations. The first stipulation is a waiver request from section 190-282B9, that will read, is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. I'm going to add a new stipulation, number two, and that will be a request for a waiver from section 215-190B1 to permit the minimal increase of .01 cubic square feet in-site runoff post-construction, and that will read, is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And then, the current stipulations, two through six, to be renumbered accordingly and to be as written in the staff report.
Mr. Chair, I would just ask that you delete stipulation number four. We did receive a letter from Joe Mendola dated August 3rd.
Oh, yes.
That all comments have been addressed.
Yeah, my apologies, so.
Go ahead, you can amend.
Yeah, amend to include the first two waiver requests as indicated, stipulations two and three to be renumbered and as written in the staff report, and then five and six as written in the staff report and renumbered as applicable.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve with the stipulations as stated by Mr. Varley. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. All right, moving on. Next up, we have Old Business Subdivision Plan, this case number 821-0299-145, Temple Street LLC owner, Green Ridge LLC applicant, the proposed three-lot subdivision, property located at 145, 149 Temple Street. And we're going to have some discussion around this to include case number 821-0300, which is the same owner and applicant, and for the proposed site plan to show a four-bay garage, office, and storage. Case number 821-0301, same owner, same applicant, for a proposed site plan to add asphalt manufacturing. And case number 821-0302, same owner and applicant, proposed site plan to add proposed offices. So right now, these four applications are currently tabled from an earlier meeting, just to summarize for the board, and some of those, the board had wanted to do some additional research, site visits and such, you know, on their own ended up doing some of that, self-included. So, you know, to hear the applicant here, we need to open the hearings again, but I would like to have some discussion about these particular plans, you know, with the board here first. In particular, I'm going to ask the question of the board whether you feel like you have the right information with regard to environmental impacts for, in particular, the asphalt manufacturing part of this, these applications. I have done some research with planning, and, you know, we do, and we have done in the past, required, you know, there hasn't been an environmental assessment with regard to air, water, noise really provided to us, but the board has the jurisdiction to ask that of the city. And we can require that, or from the city's sort of on-retainer consultants, environmental consultants. So I'm, I guess what I'm looking for is some discussion amongst the board on whether you feel like you have enough information currently to take this off and to feel like you can make decisions, or is there interest in this, getting the city to do an environmental, third-party environmental assessment? And I would say, you know, from my own opinion, it would be specific to air, water, and noise, because we do have traffic information that's been provided. So I'd like to hear some discussion amongst that before we even consider opening the hearing at this point, at the board level. Thoughts on that? Mr. Ursh?
I'm concerned we have no really, no objective information about the impact of the project. The orders, to be honest with you, are a bigger concern of mine. I've been around asphalt operations before, they can be pretty smelly. So I think we really do need some kind of objective opinion on this.
Mr. Peterson?
Two things to offer. When I read the summary from the Environmental Health Department, Heidi Peake, she's a national employee, it was very short and maybe questioned, well, where did she get her information from? It looked like she said, if it's okay with the DES, it's okay with me. And like, did she ever do any like independent, looking into this matter to find out about the potential noxious gases coming off by all the trucks departing the facility? So that's, so I just wonder how much of a research did our health department do? And then my point two is, I went down to the Westford Asphalt Plant, stayed there for an hour, watched everything, I wrote a little trip report. for an hour, watched everything, I wrote a little trip report, and if it's okay with you, I'd like to either share it with the department-
Before we get into that, we're not in, like, a public meeting, you say, like, at this point?
But I'm just wondering, the Environmental Health Department, they have a very cursory summary, and they seem to just approve it, and I'd like to know, what did they do to come to that decision?
Yeah. Can I get some feedback from the staff on the process, on the board's requesting? I mean, we've done this in the past for third-party traffic studies, third-party other, I mean, this is not the first time, by any stretch. What, is it just a request of the board that initiates that within the city?
Yeah, I think if Matt is here, he could speak to it more, but it is something that, yeah, you could definitely ask for it. I mean, I think Matt would have to handle, ask, answer more of the questions about-
Yeah, go ahead.
-you know, the money, regards to it.
Okay. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. Matt Sullivan, Community Development Director. The board has the authority, particularly within the context of the transit-oriented development and the associated mixed-use overlay, site plan suitability standards, to ask for information that helps clarify any project's impact within the transit-oriented development district. There are several ways we can go about doing that, several of which you've used in the past. One of those is actually asking the applicant to produce a, its own sort of independent study of these issues, particularly the water, air, and noise factors that you're mentioning this evening. You can certainly make that request of the applicant. You're also welcome, sort of at your own expense or the city's expense, to request an additional report on your own behalf of the application that's before you. You're welcome to take either approach, and you can certainly extend the option to the applicant to prepare their own report, if you're going to request your own, but you do have the option to request of city staff that we seek a third-party review of this application, and you're welcome to focus that review on the components of the mixed-use overlay standards that might be of interest to the board in deciding whether this application is appropriate.
Okay. Questions by the board on that process?
And so, yeah, I apologize if I missed this, but if we were to, as the chair indicated, if we were to request it of the board, understanding that we could ask the applicant what their, you know, for their feedback on that, but the availability of requesting that report to the city would be at the cost of the city is-
That is, that is correct. You can certainly request a report be produced at the cost of the applicant, but based on the criteria that are being discussed, I think it may be of interest to actually have city resources dedicated to this effort. You're welcome to request either approach, though. But yes, it will be city resources in this case, based on what I'm hearing this evening.
Okay. All right. So, I think, I guess I'm looking for feedback from the board on whether this is desirable for us before I, you know, we would make a motion essentially to this, to this fact, you know. I do think it might be appropriate for us to open the hearing, if we're going to do this, which I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads, so I think it's probably appropriate to open the hearing for the specific use of hearing from the applicant. First, are they acceptable? I mean, this is going to move things forward in time a little bit. Obviously, we're, you know, there is some delays that would be produced, but I would like to hear from the applicant about whether they're okay waiting on those for this information. And then, you know, I would also probably like to hear from the applicant whether they desire to do their own. I personally think that we should do our own, which we have done many times in the past, but if, you know, it's certainly going to be, if the applicant wants to do their own report as well, to sort of have something to compare to, I think that's perfectly appropriate, too, so. Does anybody want to? I think we should open the hearing, but only for that purpose. I think it'd be premature, if we're going to get an environmental impact analysis, to have public comment until that analysis is actually given to the public, because this would, if the city does it, it's going to be open to everybody to get to see it and to read it and understand it, so.
Yeah, I just-
Go ahead, Mr. Barley.
To, to sort of, first of all, I do generally agree that I think that there is value in having this assessment done, you know, prior to the board making a final decision, and, you know, I think you see from, you know, some of the comments, and I expect that some of the testimony you would get, there are a number of abutters and other interested folks who are expressing concern about precisely these types of issues, and I know, you know, we've had testimony from the applicant as to the manner in which it would be operated and, and, you know, representations about the, you know, the nature of the impact, you know, it being, you know, minimal, and I also understand the applicant has to get a permit from, you know, DES, but I think it would be helpful for us to have something a little bit more concrete. I think it would frankly be to the benefit of the applicant, to the benefit of the city, and to the benefit of the abutters, you know, to have, you know, something a little bit more on that. And so, I think in terms of the process, I agree, I think, I think we would need to open the hearing, I think we should hear from the applicant for that limited purpose, and ultimately, if we were to proceed down that road, I think what we'd be looking at is, you know, motion to further table-
Right.
-so that we could have the opportunity to have that additional work performed.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Okay. All right, so I'm going to, does somebody want to make a motion to hear from the applicant? I mean, they don't have to comment if they don't want, but I think we could give them the opportunity if we open, I would just be specific about the opening the hearing for the specific ten of hearing from the applicant on the continuance, you know, additional tabling and the, you know, whether or not they, have any concerns about the city study and whether there be any, or whether they have a desire to do their own. Does someone want to make a motion? Mr. Peterson?
I'd like to make a motion to ask the applicant if they have any opinions on whether or not an environmental impact analysis should be done, and find out their feelings on this matter.
Okay.
And just to clarify, specifically, we're removing the case from the table to receive that.
So, to receive the applicant's opinion on this matter, we'd have to make a motion to remove this matter from the table.
Okay, so we have that motion to take this off the table for the specific purpose of getting some feedback from the applicant regarding the discussion that we just had around the board, getting a environmental impact analysis from the city. So, do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Barley. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Is there somebody from the applicant? I guess you're not obligated, but I'll give you the opportunity to talk a little bit about what we've been talking about, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
For the record, my name is Gerald Preuner, I'm an attorney, 22th Foulks Square, and Nashville
representing the applicant. I have also with us this evening, Richard Maynard, an engineer, as well as Mr. DeFerice, who is the applicant, and Jason Plut for traffic. I was going to just quickly reiterate for the board what we told you at the June 2nd meeting, is that we're properly zoned. This was reiterated by Matt Sullivan when he told you that we are properly zoned, we have certain rights. We made the reports that required in the city. The health department, I understand, Mr. Peterson, that you don't like the report as being too short, but that would have been something we could have taken care of on January 2nd. The fire department is okay with it, and they've gone through all of the plans that we had for doing it. The traffic is also satisfied with our plans, and we've answered all the questions that the engineering department has asked for. So, we feel that we're entitled to get our plans approved. We've waited a long time. In our material that we supplied to the board, we supplied how this plant works, how it's being taken care of, how the issues that you're now talking about, odor and noise, are taken care of as well. I will also recognize the fact that this board has the right to ask us to provide you a report regarding what your concerns are. But if that is the case, we would like to know what specifically you're requiring for us to look at.
Okay.
I will tell you this, that there's nothing in the city of Nashville regarding any noise ordinance or odor ordinance. If there is, we'll ask the staff to give us those ordinances, and we'll try and get a certain expert to explain those to you. But I will tell you one other step. If this board approves our plans, the state of New Hampshire takes over. The New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services takes over, they permit the plan from the start, and it continues till the plan is either closed or goes out of business. So, and they have standards. They have standards that have to be met. So, the questions of noise and odor don't ever go away, as far as this plant's concerned. The DES, I've sent you an application form for the DES, should be in your material, that shows how detailed the DES is regarding these particular plants. If you want something, tell us specifically what you want, but we've already, and why I say that, because we've already answered those questions. And besides that, we have to meet the standards of DES regarding all of those issues. So, we're not afraid of answering those issues.
Okay. So, just specifically, I guess, you don't even really have to commit to it or whatever, I mean, you know, I think the board will make a decision on our end whether we want something that's the city, from the city, to do it, but do you, is it your intention to, if we're doing that, to do your own report, and do you need time?
No.
I said, if the board decides to do an environmental impact analysis using their own resources, the city, is it going to be your intention or your desire to conduct your own impact study with, of similar scope?
No.
And do you need time for that?
No, if the city wants to go ahead and do it, but, you know, time has gone a long ways.
Sure.
City wants to do it, we will cooperate. Throughout this process, we have not tried to hide anything.
Understood.
Mr. Peterson, it's been the Westford, we didn't kick him off, we didn't have him arrested, we didn't bury him in the asphalt. We took care of it. You and Adam have visited the site along with others on Temple Street, we have nothing to hide. We want to have all of the information and make a decision. So, if you need, you know, the further report than what we've already provided, than what we've done, than what the DES does, that's a decision you have to make.
Right, okay. Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant while we're, I guess, let's stay within our narrow board here, but while we have the hearing open, because I don't want to have to kind of reopen things again.
Yeah, just, I guess, within that narrow, Ben, and Attorney Preuner, just to speak to, I mean, you've mentioned, and the applicant had mentioned this before, that you have to go through the permitting process with DES, and, you know, I appreciate that, I think all the board members appreciate that, but-
Adam, if you could speak up a little bit louder, I think age is creeping up on me, and maybe do something else, but I'm having a difficult time hearing.
Sure, yeah, I will, I will try to speak a bit louder. So, what I was saying is, is, you know, I appreciate, and I think all the board members appreciate what you said, indicated in terms of the applicant needing to apply for a permit from, from New Hampshire DES. But, you know, at the stage we're at in the process, we don't have the benefit of, you know, the DES analysis or any materials you're submitting in that process, so I think part of what we're aiming for here is to have a little bit more of that insight before we are making a substantive decision on the application, as opposed to saying, you know, we're simply going to make a decision and then, you know, hope or rely on DES to go through that process, and I'm not suggesting that it's not a thorough one, but we just don't have the benefit of that information. And so, the only, I guess, question I would ask related to that is, you know, to the extent that the, if the applicant, if you had said, well, we've already provided or performed or created some sort of environmental site assessment based on requirements of DES, you know, it would be helpful to know that. I don't think we've, you know, we've seen anything in that regard, but if there's something that has, if there's something that you needed to perform to satisfy the DES requirements, that would be helpful to understand as well.
We have, we don't get, kick in until after the board has asked, then we do it. Then DES stays with us forever, and we have to meet all of their requirements, they have requirements.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, understood, okay. Anybody else on the board have any questions of the applicant? Okay. So, you would be amenable to the tabling and continuance for the board to get this additional information?
If that's, I'm not amenable, but I'm not yelling and screaming.
Okay, we'll take that.
I recognize the board's ability to ask for that, or to take time to do that.
Understood, appreciate it, okay. All right, so, appreciate that, I think there are no more questions. Any questions for staff while we're in a hearing?
I think we need to post closing.
Okay, so, go ahead, Mr. Hudson.
I don't, I don't have a question, I just want to correct the record that engineering comments have not been addressed to our satisfaction, I don't know if that's what was intended. I know there was a statement made about engineering questions or comments have been answered, and there've been, like, some one-liners saying that things aren't applicable, we shouldn't care about it, or whatever, that type of thing, so we're certainly not satisfied from an engineering standpoint, and I just want to make that clear for the record.
All right, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing again, and move back into meeting. So, we've heard from the applicant, you know, I think Mr. Barley put it well, it's sort of like, in some of these technically complex cases, you know, the more information we have at the front, I think the better equipped the board is, I think, frankly, like Mr. Barley said, it's better for the applicant, the staff, and the, or applicant, the board, and the abutters, to have this ahead of time, so I'm definitely in favor of, I think using the board's resources, i.e. the city, to conduct the third-party environmental impact analysis is, is what I think is the right approach for this, and I think it should be specific to noise, air, you know, and we might as well do water at the same time. Traffic, we do have a reasonably significant assessment from the, from the applicant and from, you know, being evaluated by the city, so I'm not sure, we need to go further with that, you know, other than evaluating that. Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, we would benefit from however traffic affects it, air, noise, and water-
Correct.
But, but, yeah, in terms of traffic volumes, I would agree with that.
Yeah, so the noise from the potential trucks, traffic, whatever, the air emissions and any kind of water drainage impacts, I think would be important, but, you know, the volume wasn't something I thought we needed to have third-party analysis on myself. Mr. Peterson?
Well, along with the noise in the air, just the wear and tear on the infrastructure, and the character of the city, how all these 100, 150 trucks per day is going to affect life on Main Street.
Yeah, I, I would say that while I think that's a relevant consideration for the board, I think it probably goes beyond the scope of what we would be asking for the city to do here. I mean, I think what we're focused on is, and frankly, even with the, you know, the traffic, the environmental factor factor of the traffic, I would view that as sort of ancillary in terms of what we're trying to get from this assessment, which is really, it seems to me, it is the operation of the asphalt plant, you know, on the site and- to me, it is the operation of the asphalt plant, you know, on the site and, and the, you know, air, air, noise, water impact there.
Yeah, to the surrounding area, you know.
Right, 'cause I think to, to say to the, you know, the environmental engineering professionals, you know, to make an assessment about impact on infrastructure, impact on character of the city, I think that's really beyond the scope of what they're qualified to do.
I think it's important for us to make a judgment.
Right, right, I don't mean to suggest that's not a relevant factor for the board, it's just, I think it's beyond the scope of what we can reasonably ask for the...
So, those extra factors won't be swept under the rug, we're thinking more about environmental air and noise?
Yeah, I think my concern is primarily, you know, yeah, what's the, what's the impact to the, to the environment in terms of emissions of, you know, within the air, emissions on the ground and to the water, and noise to the surrounding area around the proposed development, so. And I think that's a pretty straightforward analysis. I mean, we've, we've had these types of analyses for other projects, you know, so, I'm not, I don't think that's outside of the norm, so. So, it sounds like there's some agreement here. Does somebody wanna, does anybody need more discussion? Do we wanna make a motion?
The only, I guess, the only process point question I have, and this would be for staff, is how much time, you know, do we think we need to engage the, the city's consultant and to have them perform this work so that we can table to a date certain?
Well, our next meeting isn't until September 1st, and I think it would be a good idea to table it to that meeting.
Yeah.
And then we can see as the process goes along how long it's gonna take.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, doing this quickly is, is the benefit of the board and the applicant, so, and the abutters, so, getting the information as quickly as possible. So, I would be in favor of, let's, let's try to make it happen, you know, by the next meeting if we can. All right. So, does someone wanna make a motion on this? Mr. Barley?
Yeah, hold on just a second, I have to get back to the, okay. And if the board's in agreement, I will make a joint motion as to all four cases.
Yes. I'll be good with that.
Okay. Okay, so, I would make a motion to table as to the following cases. Old Business Subdivision Plan, case number A21-0299, and then Old Business Site Plans, cases number A21-0300, A21-0301, and A21-0302. And in each case, that, those, with each, as respect, with respect to each of those items, would be tabled to our September 1st, say, September 1st meeting. And the, the purpose would be to allow time for the city to engage at its cost an environmental consultant to perform an environmental assessment as to air, water, and noise with respect to the operation of an asphalt plant at the proposed site at 145 Temple Street.
Great, so, we have that motion, as stated by Mr. Barley. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna continue to move on with our agenda. Next up, new business conditional special use permits, there are none. New Business Subdivision Plans, this is case number A22-0106, Ryzen &amp; Homes Elite LLC. This is an application and acceptance of a proposed three-lot subdivision. Property is located at 15 Bartlett Avenue. So, I'll start with the board. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application and wanna make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Hirsch?
I move to take jurisdiction.
All right, so, we have a motion that we're ready for jurisdiction by Mr. Hirsch. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes unanimously, we have jurisdiction. Okay. All right. Okay, we're ready.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chad Brannon, I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. I will be representing Ryzen &amp; Homes Elite this evening. With me tonight from Ryzen &amp; Homes Elite is Dick Ryzenin, and together we'll do our best to answer any questions that the board and public may have with this application. We are before you this evening, seeking an approval for a three-lot subdivision of Tax Map Parcel 57-3. The subject parcel has a physical address of 15 Bartlett Avenue and is located at the intersection of Bartlett Avenue and Wellington Street. This property consists of 12.132 acres of land, or 528,464 square feet, and is currently occupied by a single-family residential house with associated site improvements. Zoning for the property is Residential District RA, which has a, excuse me, minimum lot size requirement of 7,500 square feet, or 0.172 acres, with 60 feet of road frontage. The existing topography on-site is generally mild throughout. The existing house is situated at the high point of the property, so there's essentially two watersheds for this property. One watershed drains to the east along the front yard of the existing residence, and then the other watershed generally drains to the west, to the back towards Greeley Park. My client is proposing a three-lot subdivision, positioning the existing residence on 10.91, or, excuse me, 10.901 acres of land, and creating two new lots along Bartlett Avenue. The two new lots will range in size from 0.494 acres and 0.737 acres in size, and both of the new lots will take access off of Bartlett Avenue. All of the lots, both the, or, all three of the lots, the existing residential home and the two new lots, will meet all of the city dimensional standards and all of the zoning requirements. This project has been designed to meet city standards as well. We've, we've graded both of the new lots. We've also incorporated stormwater management elements. Each of the new lots will have an infiltration basin situated in their backyard, which will mitigate all of the improvements from the development. All of the lots will also be connected to municipal services, which we've detailed on the plans submitted with the application. So, we'll be tying the new residential homes into the municipal sewer, into Penachuk Water. They'll also be connected to natural gas, and they'll be serviced by underground electric and communications. With this project, we are requesting one waiver. That waiver is from Section 19282B9, and that's pertaining to the location of physical features within 1,000 feet of subdivision boundaries. We have detailed significantly the areas in close proximity to the project area, and we think we've captured enough information to appropriately demonstrate that we meet all the regulations of the city. We also have worked through some staff reviews, including a review from the Fire Department. We've made a number of revisions to the plans to address Fire Department comments relative to access widths, radiuses and such into the site. And we are in receipt of the August 2nd letter from the Engineering Department. We have had an opportunity to go through all of those comments in detail, and we have no issues with any of those comments. We also have no issues with any of the staff recommendations and conditions this evening, so we're hoping that we'll be able to address any questions and concerns that the board may have, and that we may obtain conditional approval for this project this evening. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd try to answer any questions that the board may have, or I'd be happy to go into detail on the waiver request.
Oh, I think the waiver request is pretty standard, we're probably okay there, but the, can you just explain the sidewalk, what's happening on the sidewalk, just so you're not, like, kind of read through it all, like, what's, what's the plan?
Sure, so, the sidewalk has been a topic of great discussion, and I think the board may have noticed that there's been a modification to the staff memo relative to the sidewalk. So, when we initially started this development, we talked to city staff about, you know, what's the most appropriate way to handle a sidewalk for this project. That discussion really was based on where the existing sidewalks are in proximity to this property. So, the closest sidewalk, if you travel east down Bartlett Avenue, is at Webster, I think it's Webster Road, which is, which is on the south side of Bartlett Avenue. The other sidewalk, closest sidewalk, is situated to the south of the site, and that roadway is Columbia Avenue. And so, to meet the technical requirements of the regulations, our initial submission showed a sidewalk along the frontage of the property on the north side of Bartlett Avenue. In working through the details with city staff, I think we both agreed, and, you know, I won't speak for them on this topic, but I think we came to a, an agreement that it makes more sense to construct a sidewalk on the south side of Bartlett Avenue, because that would allow connectivity eventually to Webster, the sidewalk that's along that same side of the road down by Webster Street. So, that's what the staff recommendations support, is that recent dialogue. So, when I say we agree with the staff recommendations, we essentially agree that we would design a sidewalk on the south side of Bartlett Avenue, and that would be bonded as part of this project. So, thereby, we would be technically meeting the sidewalk requirements and the ordinance. I think that staff and, and our office has agreed that, that that would be the case. But again, I don't wanna speak for them either.
All right, thanks.
That's a good sound.
And just a clarification for me, so, the, I'll call it the, the lot that's kinda in the back, top right, I don't know.
Yep.
Drawing up there. So, that's a, essentially, the access to that is sort of a curb cut off of the somewhat original driveway?
Yeah, so, there's a, there's an existing driveway that, so, the, the existing residence has a driveway located here that comes in and kinda accesses the southern side. Sorry, I have a natural shake, so, see if I can leverage the desk here. Accesses the southern side, and then there's also an access that kinda parallels the front yard and then comes around to the north side of the home. What we're proposing is, rather than constructing another curb cut along Bartlett Avenue, is to share that existing access with the, the home that we're positioning in the back. And I will say that the, the lots that we're proposing are, are much larger than the minimum standards, and we have worked, my client has worked with, you know, the abutting property owner to try to position those homes so that they offer, you know, the greatest separation to the property to the east. So, there's been a lot of thought put into that layout, and that's part of the reason why we're sharing that driveway and positioning those homes accordingly.
And does there have to be essentially an easement there?
There is an easement, that's what's shown in yellow. So, there's a common driveway and a utility easement proposed right there.
Got it.
And, and that again is addressed in the, in the staff recommendations, that we provide final documents for that.
Okay, thank you. Other questions by the board for the applicant? Anybody? Okay, we're good on the board's side.
Thank you.
So, at this point, I'll open up, anybody in the audience who should speak in opposition or concerned, have a question of the plan, go ahead and come on up, if you can state your name and address for record, come on up.
Hi, Alderman Patricia Clea, 9 Maywood Drive. I am the Ward 3 Alderman, where this property will be held. I don't have as many concerns about the subdivision of it. I, I am a little concerned whenever, any, anytime anything is going to be built within that area, that adds to the stress of any type of current infrastructure. I've heard that the, the water supply or the, will be coming from a different area. I just want to state that the sidewalk on the opposite side of the property will impact some of the, the other properties there, and I won't go into it because they'll speak to that, rather than I, than I speak to it. But I just wanna let the board know that every time we build something in that area, many of the residents, and I hear from all the time, and I, and I've spoken to you about this before, is that they have water pressure issues. They, I can tell you that at least one of the properties, it's just a few homes down there, was the last person that was put onto the, the city water. And the, one of the things that they had to sign a document that stated, they would never complain about the water pressure, because they were at the end of the line and, and the addition to it. So, I see these properties, when they already exist, so I understand that, but two more properties going in, and let's be honest, there's been a lot of talk about potential of others going on, but I won't go that because I know it's, it's creeping into somewhere, to another subject, but, so, this is just one of my concerns, and I know it's only two more homes, but the other thing that I hear about a lot, as part of the infrastructure in that area, is cell service or any type of Wi-Fi thing. They're already having issues there. So, the more homes that go into it also pulls into it, and again, that might not be something that you all look at, but it is something that I hear from the residents and so on. So, every time something new goes in, I get a little anxiety about what, what is going on there. And, and I have to look at the people that live there. I always look at it as, I want more homes, I want more things to do that, but to what impact are we doing to the residents that are there? I'll let the residents speak more to that, but I just wanted to put those kind of things out to you. Two more homes is not gonna create any kind of a excess traffic issue, but in that area, we do have the traffic issue because of the school. And maybe it's not a, an everyday or a nine-to-five, but when the students are dropped off and picked up, they're all done from one location at St. Chris's. And I, and I've asked them, maybe do, pick up in one door and drop off at the other, and they're not doing it. So, again, every time I see more and more creep, and again, that's a conversation for another time, but I have to put these type of things out. But, thank you so much for taking the time to listen to me, and I appreciate your, your time and your due diligence to this. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Anybody else, come on up? Just remember to state your name and address, and be pretty close to the mic.
My name's Kathy Lody, 12 Bartlett Ave. First, I'd like to thank those of you who gave a favorable recommendation to the Board of Aldermen last year on RS 21202-3, or 202 and 203, which was for the city to purchase this parcel. It was an important recommendation that you gave last year, and I appreciate it. It would've saved a 13-acre forest of valuable 50-year-old trees that actually absorbed tens of thousands of pounds of carbon dioxide per acre. All of us who supported that resolution were devastated when it was killed by the Board of Aldermen, and now, on a 100-plus degree day here in Nashua, while thousands of acres burn in other parts of the country from climate change, it saddens me that we're here to approve the cutting down of all these trees and changing a neighborhood. However, that said, once Mr. Ryzenin became owner of the property, he did meet with us, and we appreciated that. He listened to our concerns, he said most of our concerns were a subject matter for the board, which is why I'm here. And while Mr. Ryzenin and I disagree on the number of units that he plans to build and the ordinance that allows this subdivision, and the one that's gonna be coming after it on that larger parcel, we're definitely respectful of his right to do so. And we understand his perspective and wanna work together to avoid any issues, both during construction and after. I live in the house across the street from where the development is I live in the house across the street from where the development is going to take place, so we're asking the board to address a few of the safety and other concerns that we do have and to preserve some of the character of this very old neighborhood. The staff report for the project that was in the documents submitted references a traffic impact report, which I would like for the public to be able to see. It wasn't in any documents that I was able to see, so I'd like to see that. And I do very much want to talk about the sidewalk. The sidewalk that goes, if you're looking up at that picture, you're seeing the single egress that's going to go into the larger development is going to empty right at that 90-degree angle where the two streets meet. And then on the south side of Bartlett, the sidewalk's going to start, and it's going to go down to the school, to the corner of Webster and Bartlett. That is going to cover all 200 feet of frontage of my property. What that will also do is take down nine very large, mature shade trees. So you're essentially, you're taking down the 13 acres across the street and those trees that line the street, and now this sidewalk's going to take down a lot of the shade on my side of the street. And now you're going to go from a shady tree-lined street to hot concrete and asphalt, which is not what we want to do. We feel that this sidewalk will destroy the entire character of our property and Bartlett Avenue. So we'd like you to nix the sidewalk. We don't feel that the sidewalk's adding any kind of safety feature. We feel that the safety issues are going to come where that egress dumps everybody out at that right angle. Now, the school is another issue that we've tried to address on our own. The school allows parents to line up to drop off and pick up, and they're not there just for a few minutes. They're usually there about 40 minutes each time, and sometimes they come back at night for other school activities. They park along that street, they, there's standing and stopping. They curve around that right angle, so when those cars are parked there and there's traffic trying to get in and out of the development, it just, you all are much more experienced at this than I am, but it seems like that's creating a safety concern. So my suggestion would be to maybe talk to the school, see if they can route the traffic down Webster or in the back of their own parking lot, and then that would eliminate, I think, some of the traffic safety issues that this could create. As Alderman Klee alluded to, we do have water pressure issues. Two people can't shower in my house at the same time. We get just a trickle. So that is concerning. Once a lot of units are added above us, we're kind of towards the end of the line. I'm a little concerned what that will do, and I'd like, I'd like to understand if there's a way we can measure the water pressure beforehand, and if it drops, then find some way, either through Penachuk or Mr. Reisenin, to help mitigate that. Finally, two last points. I'm also a member of the Friends of Greeley Park, and the newly created Lot 57-40, which is to the back, does have some siltation control fences, a stone check dam. Those things are kind of up against the border of Greeley, so I'm just asking the board to look at that and make sure that that's not going to adversely affect the trees on the border of Greeley Park. This parcel is large. It borders Greeley Park on three sides. We just want to make sure that we're not creating any damage to what everybody keeps calling a city gem. Let's make sure we can keep it that way. And then finally, my husband and I work out of our home, as so many do now. We're not going into an office, unfortunately. And we would just like to ask Mr. Reisenin if he could make sure that when the construction starts, the vehicles aren't parked in front of our home. And he has indicated that when they do blast and cut, that we'll get some sort of communication because we might not be able to work at all those days from home, and we'll need to be able to make arrangements to go elsewhere. Thank you very much for listening to my concerns. Again, I'm not here to stop the development or anything. Mr. Reisenin has been kind enough to talk through a lot of these things with us, so we need your help on some of these, obviously. So I appreciate what you do for Nashua and the citizens like me. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned or have a question on the plan? Anybody on Zoom?
We can't hear you.
Looks like there's somebody.
Are you able to hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. My name is Robert Lodi, 12 Bartlett Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board for your service to our city and doing the difficult work that's necessary for us to have a city. I think all of us are on the, you know, of a similar concern, which is, you know, two primary. One is to maintain the character and integrity of the neighborhood, and two, ensure the safety and security, you know, of the citizens with respect to the character of the neighborhood. We think, this is a neighborhood, if you've been up here in Bartlett Ave in particular, every home on Bartlett Avenue is different. These are not vinyl clad McMansions. Every single home is unique, and there's a lot of large and mature trees. My concern is, are we starting to see a change in the character of the neighborhood that would dilute the appeal that the north end brings and the folks that it brings with it? Secondarily, as it relates to the character of the neighborhood, and as my wife, who just spoke before me, mentioned, I work from home. I make my livelihood here as well as living here. I require internet access to be able to make a living. The bandwidth is already constrained, particularly when the school's in session, and I'm concerned about the addition of, you know, the two homes and actually of three homes because the Barker property, you know, had been vacant for some time and only one, you know, elderly member of the family was still resident, so not a large consumer of bandwidth. But as this additional properties get brought online, these three, and then the additional 21 homes, I believe Mr. Reisenin is planning for the black, once he looks to subdivide that out, we're going to see water pressure and internet bandwidth be declined, and I'd like the planning board to take some steps to be able to protect against that. Again, this is where I earn my living, and I use that to pay my taxes, by the way. Second, with respect to the safety, we did not see a copy of the traffic impact report. What I would ask is if, you know, the report could be made public, but depending on the time of day, the traffic can vary widely, and I would encourage, if the report didn't do this, to have the traffic impact assessment done during morning and evening rush hour, and then specifically, as Alderman Klee mentioned, just come by during morning and afternoon and drop off and pick up for the students, and come by any time there's an event in the evening, which they're often in. The traffic in the area is not only heavy, it's speeding up and down. There's people whipping up Bartlett, banging U-turns in driveways and turning back around and parking in front of the school. It's been an ongoing issue and a concern, and if you put a sidewalk on my side of the street and you're coming out of the development, you need to cross that right at the junction of Wellington and Bartlett. So you're going to have people at the peak traffic choke point needing to cross the street to reach the sidewalk. I would argue the sidewalk makes things less safe, not more. Secondarily, with respect to safety, there's a pretty significant grade. My property is about five or six feet below grade, and if you look at where the setback for the sidewalk is, and forgive my ignorance on it, I believe the setback is eight feet from the roadway, but if we measure back eight feet, you're right at the edge of where the slope is. So if you have a sidewalk there, someone steps off the sidewalk to my property, they tumble down five feet. So I think a concern, you know, there is the safety of anyone that would transit on that sidewalk needs to be addressed, and I'm not sure if that's fencing or what else would be needed done, but I'd be concerned about what my liability would be as a homeowner if someone was injured falling off the sidewalk onto my property. The last one was with respect to the waiver that was being requested on not needing to describe objects within 1,000 feet of the property. I would ask the board, if it's in the public interest to grant that waiver, it seems reasonable in light of not only this initial development, but the future proposed development and the, being adjacent to Greeley Park, that it would behoove the city, you know, the citizens and in the public interest to have a clear understanding of things that were within 1,000 feet of this development. With that being said, I then want to thank the board and the plan, Planning Board and the board, I'm sorry, city engineers that were involved in the preparation of this for the service to the city, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concerned or have a question on the plan?
Oh, I'm sorry, if I may. I did have one question I forgot to ask.
Go ahead.
Is the applicant, sorry, is the applicant required to maintain the property prior to the development work going on? And the reason I mention that, there's been a series of break-ins that were in the neighborhood. The property has not been maintained, it's not been mowed, it's become overgrown, and it appears abandoned, and I'm just wondering if that, worried that that might continue to invite potential criminal activity in the neighborhood. So I'd like to, you know, just understand if that's a requirement, and then maybe we can ask Mr. Reisenin. Send one of your landscapers over here and mow the place, please.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concerned or have a question on the plan? Okay, I'm not hearing any, so I'm going to go ahead and give the applicant an opportunity to talk on a few of these things. So I guess the questions I have, you know, there was a few for the board, I mean, but you're welcome to comment on some of these. Maybe speak to the water pressure, the, in particular, the construction, and there was a question about the drainage basin with respect to protection of everything.
So just touching on the water pressure, with every submission of a subdivision package, we submit plans and details to Penachuk Water Works if we're connecting to their system. We have not heard any, of any concerns from Penachuk Water. We have done some research because we have heard that there's, you know, potentially some pressure concerns in the neighborhood, and it's my understanding that the volume of water is fine, but if you have pressure issues in your home, then you may need to do a little booster pump for your home to increase the pressure inside. I mean, we're talking two additional homes here. The municipal service is right out front. Again, we haven't heard of any issues from Penachuk for supplying the two lots. There's been some inference to future development, and I just want to be careful about speaking about that because, you know, future development leads to different, you know, different scope of review, and, you know, for water, particular to future development, I can tell you, we are doing, working with Penachuk to do flow tests and pressure tests out there for the future development because that was deemed to be necessary for that. And in fact, the fire department wanted confirmation that there's appropriate flows for future development beyond the, you know, the two lots that we have here. So it's my understanding that, you know, these two homes are not going to, you know, create an issue in that there is adequate water supply. I can't say for certain that we won't have to do a little, you know, booster pump in each, in each home to make sure that you have adequate pressures, but I think everybody has that ability to do that or make improvements if there's, you know, if there's issues because, again, it's my understanding the volume of water is adequate. When it comes to, and I'm just going down through, Mr. Chairman, kind of my list of notes, but certainly if you want me to, you know, to expand upon anything, please feel free to let me know. When it comes to traffic, the city has a traffic impact worksheet that you have to fill out to determine whether you need to do additional studies for traffic. So we did fill that out and we supplied that using ITE, Institute of Transportation Engineers, you know, just standard data, and this project falls well below, you know, being just two additional lots, well below any thresholds that the city has for additional traffic requirements. So we met that city requirement. We provided the information. It's not a study for this project, so I don't want people to think that there's a traffic study out there. It's simply an evaluation, what we're proposing, you know, what those numbers are, and then the city has published thresholds as to whether additional studies are required, and we don't come close to meeting any of those requirements. In regards to safety, I mean, I, I think that, you know, some of the conditions that are being talked about is people potentially crossing Wellington Road from a development that we're not yet talking about and accessing a sidewalk that's not yet built. So I want to be careful about, you know, the safety discussion as it relates to future usage because there's other things that may come into play, like reviewing with those details with city traffic and engineering and so on. What we're talking about tonight is two additional lots, and, you know, have we addressed safety criteria for these two lots? And I believe we have. We've gone through a fire department review. There's adequate site distance at these driveways. One of them exists already, but there's adequate site distance, so safety from a vehicular standpoint is good. There is no sidewalks currently along this section, and the city has regulations that promote sidewalk construction as a part of subdivisions. We're merely trying to meet those requirements. We've agreed to work with the city if there's a, you know, a more appropriate location for that sidewalk, but I think good planning, and I, again, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but in talking with city staff, they agreed and felt that good planning would be to put the sidewalk on the south side of Bartlett Avenue because that's where it can connect. If somebody wants to walk to the school or, you know, children want to walk to the school, it would connect on the south side. You know, whether the board requires the sidewalk or not is, I guess, up to the, you know, up to the board. We're trying to just meet the requirements, and we've, we've come to an agreement with the city that meets that, that this sidewalk would be bonded and we'd be willing to work with the city on, you know, on a design. The design ultimately, if it is on the south side or the north side, would be entirely within city-owned land. So if there is, you know, a tree there, it's technically a tree owned by the city, not to sound, you know, insensitive to that, but it's not my criteria. So we're doing the best we can to, you know, to prepare a plan that meets city standards and, you know, frankly, some safety standards. The Greeley Park, you know, potential for Greeley Park impacts, all of the work closest to the Greeley Park boundary on the north side really is work associated with ensuring there's no impact. There's a collection drainage soil, it's essentially a diversion soil that captures all runoff that would otherwise sheet flow onto Greeley Park. It captures that and brings it to our infiltration basin so that we can adequately capture and mitigate the stormwater runoff, which is a requirement for any development. I think the board spent a long time talking about that with the prior application, so I don't want to belabor that unless you want me to go into more details, but we are not proposing any impacts to the Greeley Park land. We do have erosion control shown there. That's temporary fencing during construction activities. That would be removed once the site is stabilized and there's an adequate stand of vegetation. But, you know, it's a valid question and concern, but the, those measures in that location are there to ensure that stand of vegetation. But, you know, it's a, it's a valid question and concern, but the, those measures in that location are, are there to ensure that there's not going to be a negative impact to Greeley Park from a, you know, a stormwater standpoint, for sure. As it relates to character, you know, the neighborhood, I mean, these are oversized lots, we meet and exceed all city requirements, you know, we, I'm sure my client intends to provide, you know, nice, adequate housing that will be, you know, in harmony with the neighborhood. Again, we worked on the layout of these homes with, you know, through discussions with the closest abutting property, and, and really tried to be, have tried to be a, a good neighbor and, and create something that's, that's very reasonable with, with the subdivision. As it relates to, you know, maintenance of the property, we're here looking for a subdivision approval, so that, you know, improvements can be made to the site, and so that people can, you know, eventually occupy and, and move in. Certainly, you know, we've worked with Ryzen and Homes Elite for a long time, and, and they, they definitely are, you know, a high-quality developer, and, and they take great care of their property. So, I imagine that, you know, the, the lawn being unmowed is, is, is something that's, you know, that's just the stage of the process that we're in, and it will eventually look a lot better, and hopefully, we can work in that direction after this evening's meeting. I think I touched on everything, Mr. Chairman, but if there was anything else that I missed, we would certainly be happy to try to answer any additional questions.
I mean, I know there was a question on internet bandwidth, but I think that's private, right, as far as.
Yeah, and I.
City.
I mean, internet bandwidth is such a tough thing, I mean, I know that personally, I've paid, you know, thousands of dollars for a dedicated fiber line to run, you know, down a, there's, there's options for improving internet that is, is, you know, that, I don't think that's, you know, necessarily the onus of, of an applicant, I think.
There's no city requirement for anything.
I'm not aware of a city requirement or a city standard.
Okay. For the board, any questions of the applicant during this rebuttal? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a couple, maybe, city ones. So the, construction parking and stuff like that, is that, Dan, is that part of a building permit? That they have to, like, is that part of a mobilization scheme on a building permit? I mean, I know on the board we have talked about, and maybe staff can answer this too, but we, we have put stipulations on, on no One Street parking by construction vehicles, you know, only on property or stuff like that in the past. We've done that before, actually several times, but I don't know if that's part of a building permit process anyway, where that's reviewed.
It's a fair question, I don't, I don't think, I don't know that it is. I know for, from Public Works, if you're gonna encumber a lane or parking for a construction activity, you need to file an encumbrance permit with us, but if you're off the road, not encumbering the roadway, you wouldn't. So if, if the board, if that's something the board wants to do, maybe it should be a stipulation.
Yeah, okay. So that was one of the questions I had. Any other questions by the board or staff? Go ahead.
I, I have a question for staff relative to the sidewalk and the bonding and that sort of thing. In the staff report, it references that it's not possible to, to do a sidewalk waiver, referencing 192, 12D, 2A. So I'm trying to read that here, just to be sure I understand, because there's an A and a B, and the B allows a new payment if there's no sidewalks on the same side of the street for 250 feet, so I, I don't know, maybe this is a, this is all the following conditions we met, so never mind.
Yeah. I mean, it's my understanding, you know, reading this and stuff, we clarify, I mean, there's just, there's no need for the waiver, because the, the sidewalk's being proposed to be constructed.
Because the other lot can be subdivided further.
Right.
That's the reason.
Yeah. But the board has the right to say yes or no on a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, that's, yeah, I, I had a similar question, which is, I think the, that provision, the ordinance is contribution in lieu of construction, right? And you're saying that, that is not available because of.
Right.
The fact that the, the one lot would remain eligible for subdivision. But there is a broader waiver provision where I think we could say, I think we could, the board could say we, we just, we simply don't want a sidewalk here, if we were to make that decision.
I don't know, Mr. Sullivan maybe has some suggestion on that? Yeah, I could, I don't want to, I want to understand what our, kind of.
Yeah, I guess the question is, does the applicant have to request that waiver?
The, and I'm, I'm only commenting because Ms. McGee and myself were part of these conversations with the applicant. We reviewed the ordinance in detail with the applicant, and we do not believe that this project is eligible for a full waiver of the sidewalk requirement.
Okay.
If you read the nature of the language and the, the call for all conditions to be met, we do not feel this is an eligible project as a, as the subdivision is proposed. Therefore, the board does not have the authority to waive the sidewalk provisions in full. That's why we've come up with what I would call a more creative solution, requiring the bonding of the sidewalk and tying it slightly to future development or possible development, but also requiring that if that development does not happen, that the applicant would actually have to build up the sidewalk. We do not believe that a waiver is available for this sidewalk. That's why it's proposed.
So it's, either the way our ordinances are currently written requires the sidewalk.
There are provisions that allow for waiver, but we do not feel that this proposal meets those conditions.
What about a board stipulation that says we don't want that on the side?
The, there are only specific provisions that the board has the authority to waive.
Yeah.
And we do not believe that the board has the authority to waive this.
To waive, yeah, okay.
So, yeah, just to clarify, I'm sorry to belabor this, but, even, because I know that there's the, the provisions that we typically rely on for a sidewalk waiver is, and I believe that's the reference, the one that's referenced in the staff report, although I don't have the ordinance in front of me, is the provision that says, if it meets these criteria, we can waive it and accept a contribution in lieu. But there's, there's that broad version, and again, I don't know the, the citation off the top of my head, but there's one, a provision that says generally that the board has authority to waive various provisions of, of the ordinances. So just to clarify, you're saying regardless, under either provision, you don't think we have the authority here to waive?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And, and I would just add, if the board is uncomfortable with this, we'd be happy to provide a detailed written opinion. We did have substantial analysis of these provisions, but it is complicated, but we did not feel that the board had authority here.
Yeah.
But as far as the side of the street, we do have that.
That is correct. That would be in cooperation with the city's engineering department to ultimately determine the best location. We do feel that it's best planning practice to have the sidewalk located on the south of the street. That conclusion was arrived at after consultation with Mr. McPhee and the applicant's engineer. We also recognize that through design of the larger development that's contemplated in this area, that design could change, and so we believe that we've written the condition flexibly such that the city could ultimately choose to locate the sidewalk on the north side of the street, but we did ask that the proposed plan set include on the south side, which is the best planning location.
But as, as far as the decision on what side it goes on, I mean, it's theoretically not getting built right away, based on the way this is set up with the bonding.
Correct.
What, what triggers the build or not?
What triggers the off-site improvement?
Yeah.
The off-site improvement is triggered by the subdivision regulation that requires sidewalks be built as part of a subdivision.
So they would have to essentially be built before these two, these two lots.
Are fully occupied. Yes, and so the way that we've, or Scott has written this, is that it's prior to the last CO.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Hudson, did you have a comment?
He read my face. Well, I would just be, I don't know, so we need to change the condition, but I just want to be specific. If we're gonna design a sidewalk on that side, I would like all the individual trees located as part of the survey to support the design, so that we know what they are. And I did just want to correct one thing about the trees. There's often a misconception that trees within a right-of-way are owned by the city. In fact, if the city doesn't own the right-of-way, it's not owned in fee, which I don't know if that's the case here or not, but the majority of roads, we don't own in fee, we have a right-of-way over them. In that case, the tree is actually owned by the, the owner of the property, and they technically own to the center of the street. We get that concern a lot, because people want us to come cut their tree that's, you know, fallen down or whatever the situation is, and it's often not our tree. As, as, with our right-of-way right, we have a right to put a sidewalk and cut a tree. We have a right to cut the tree for, you know, parking or another purpose, as long as it relates to the use of the right-of-way, but technically, it's not our tree. And in those cases where we do cut the tree, the, the owner of the tree is, has the right of the wood if they so, so should want it, so I just wanted to provide that for general information.
Okay. Can, can you comment maybe a little further on, so if the sidewalk was on the other side, what's the, what is the negative in, or what, what is the kind of way, you know, like, what did you use to weigh and how significant?
The, the primary consideration was the location of the sidewalk on the eastern side of Bartlett Avenue, and the need to ultimately construct what would be potentially two crosswalks in order to make that connection.
Right.
Whereas with the location on the south side, if future residential development is done to the west side of these properties, only one crosswalk connection would be necessary. And so it's really to reduce the number of crossings, which inherently pose a safety concern. That was the primary reasoning.
Okay.
And Engineer Hudson may want to add additional information.
Mr. Peterson?
I'm still thinking about the comments of the person who lives on Bartlett, who mentioned we'd be removing nine trees to put in the sidewalk that actually creates more traffic problems. I mean, so, is it imperative that we put a sidewalk there? You said we have no choice to, to apply the waiver, but I'm thinking putting in the sidewalk just satisfies the rules, but eliminates nine trees and makes more traffic with all the cars lined up next to the curb.
Yeah, I, I think the, the read I have is, you know, it's the regulation, and if we, we as the planning board don't have authority to change the land use codes, you know, that's another process, you know, like, you know, there is one coming up, so, you know, that might be something to talk about in the future, but ultimately, that's a, those are automatic votes, they're not planning boards that decide what goes in that land use code, ultimately.
Well, along those same lines, as, as Mr. Hudson mentioned, we don't really know who owns those trees at this time, we'd have to confirm that.
Possible.
I, I would, I would just comment that there, there's a very good reason for this regulation, and I would argue there's a very good reason why the planning board does not have the authority to waive it, and that is that ultimately, we are trying to encourage, and I believe development of this nature will encourage pedestrian use of the right-of-way. And when the board has an option, or the requirement, to provide either a protected pedestrian walkway, or to move that pedestrian traffic into the paved or traveled right-of-way or shoulder, I believe there's an inherent public purpose to having a separated pedestrian walkway. And I, I'll say for the record, I fundamentally disagree with the idea that a sidewalk creates additional vehicular congestion. I do not believe that to be the case, and I would be interested in learning more about why that might be the case. I do understand the potential for drop-off and extending vehicular queuing down the right-of-way, so there may be a relationship there, but I tend to weigh a safe and separated pedestrian connection higher than any potential congestion that might be created.
I'd just like to say, we live on a planet that's burning up, and we're gonna remove nine trees for questionable reasons.
I think we can talk about that in the meeting, you know, amongst ourselves, but.
Okay.
Any other questions for the staff while we're in the hearing? Okay, all right. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing, move on to the meeting, so. All right, so we've got the two-lot subdivision, you know, it seems like we've had some discussion about the sidewalk. I'm gonna say, man, I've been on this board like, what, ten years, eleven? This is the first one I've ever thought about not putting a sidewalk.
I think I remember one other.
But, you know, it's, but, you know, my two senses, you know, there's a lot of sides to that story, but, you know, if done properly, and it has to be designed properly, then, you know, ultimately, there are safety things, and, and we are kind of close to a school. I mean, it, it seems unreasonable to me that we would not put a sidewalk in next to a school. I mean, I, I feel like that just doesn't even jive, it doesn't pass the smell test to me, albeit it does have impact on people's property, and I understand that, and, you know, but in my opinion, that is probably more important. It's just my opinion, but, you know, as far as the, I, I think we really can't talk about the future development. We're gonna see that, that's gonna be a whole site plan if anything comes along, I think. You know, we, we really have to focus our attention at this point on what we're looking at, you know, this particular two-lot subdivision. So, you know, that's, that's kind of where I'm putting my, putting my energy at the moment on that, so. But I welcome any comments from any of you on this application. Thoughts? Mr. Riley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, I, I would generally echo your comments, and I mean, as far as the sidewalk, Mr. Peterson, I agree, I mean, if we could, if, if, if it was, you know, everything else being equal, if there was, if we said, okay, well, we could put it over here, and, you know, it's less disruption to this abutter and, and doesn't require cutting down the trees, you know, I think I'm in favor of that, but I understand, you know, where the city staff is coming from and, and, you know, why they, they came to the conclusion they did, and it certainly seems like a reasonable one. You know, with that said, you know, the way the condition is written, it does allow the applicant and staff to discuss it further, so, you know, if, if they were to, you know, rethink that and decide, well, you know, maybe the, the sidewalk is, you know, actually more appropriately located on north side of the street after all, you know, we, we're giving them, you know, the authority to, to do that here. The only other thing I would suggest, you know, per the earlier discussions, that, that I, I probably would suggest maybe we consider a condition about the construction vehicles and requiring them to be on property. I think given the size of the lot here and the circumstances, that's, that's not a, a reasonable burden on the applicant, so I, I think, I think, you know, adding a condition to require that is just reasonable.
Good. Other board members, any other comments?
Look, just a.
Go ahead, Mr. Peterson.
A comment. Instinctively, you know, putting sidewalks near the school makes sense, but sometimes, when you look at it closer, it may not make sense. I, I know people live in that neighborhood, been there a million times, it's shady, nice and pleasant, and I thought, if all those trees were gone, it'd just become another hotspot with, you know, asphalt and concrete sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, you can make the argument without the sidewalk, people want to take a car instead of walking, which generates carpment as well, so, you could, you know, I mean, making it more walkable means you're gonna use your vehicle less too, so, so I think you could kind of argue that, but.
It's so kids can get from their mom's car to the school without having to walk in the street, that's why they put the sidewalk in.
Correct, that's what I'm thinking, yeah. Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, further to the sidewalk, I don't know yet if for the, which side of the road's better to have the sidewalk on, I mean, I guess they already designed one on the ones on their side, and this requires them to go design one on the other side, I guess we could see later what the implications of that are in more detail. I think a case could be made either way for which way, which side it should be on. I just don't know that I want to, would want to see it built on the other side if some, if there aren't any, you know, if there is not a future development that disconnects to our reasoning for why it should be on that side. So I don't know, would this, is this a staff level review, or would it come back to the board?
For what side?
Before the sidewalk actually got built. This just speaks to designing it and bonding it. But if there is no future development, what happens then?
Well, I think the idea behind it was if you were going to build a sidewalk and there was no future development, you'd be building a sidewalk on the south side that would connect with the existing sidewalk. So you'd be accomplishing something rather than just throwing a sidewalk to nowhere across the street. That was the only thought kind of to play.
But just in terms of the, if I'm stating this correctly, the idea behind the stipulation here is that the staff, staff would have time to review and consider that. So we're not, we're not fixing this, you know, it specifies that the design would be the southern portion, but it's not necessarily requiring that's the ultimate result and-
Correct.
And that, and the way I'm reading this is that we would be leaving that for staff to, and the engineering department to ultimately determine, which I'm totally comfortable with, but I just-
Sure. If they determine that the other side of the street's better or something, then that's fine.
Yep.
We're going to use our experts on that.
Okay. All right. Other comments? Okay. All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve new business project A 22-0106, Resident Homes Elite LLC, located at 15 Bartlett Avenue. And that would be with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO section 190-138G. And that will be with a total of 13 stipulations. The first stipulation is a waiver request from section 190-282B9, and that will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulations two through 12 to read is written in the staff report. And then I would propose to add a 13th stipulation, and that stipulation would read that all construction vehicles during the period of construction at the site will remain at all times on the site and not on any public way.
Would that be 14?
That'd be 14.
Yeah, there's one more stipulation on-
Oh, my apologies. I was, I was looking at the, yes.
Mr. Chair, the number four, the staff requirement number four, I think can be deleted because I don't believe there are comments from Mr. Hudson because it didn't meet the threshold for a study or anything like that.
Okay. Yeah, let's get rid of-
So that, that additional condition could be substituted for number four, so you choose. And then one other minor correction, Joe Mandola's title changed as of July 1st, so now he's a senior staff engineer. So we can just make that correction.
Okay. So I will make that amendment, so we'll end up still with 13 stipulations as I was initially suggesting. So we'll remove number four and add the stipulation I indicated regarding construction vehicles as the new number 13. And then the correction noted by Mr. Hudson with respect to Joe Mandola's title and stipulation number three.
Okay. So we have that motion to approve with the 13 stipulations as indicated by Mr. Riley. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next up on the agenda, new business site plan. This is case number A 22-J 0102. This is JNT Investments LLC owner. This is an application and acceptance of proposed site improvements, including a minor building demolition, pavement expansion for improved access, parking and loading, stormwater management, and site lighting and landscape improvements. This property is located at 1 Redmond Street. So first off to the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application? I want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction. Mr. Hirsch?
So moved.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Hirsch to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any more discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No motion passes. Okay. So we have somebody from the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Ethan Beals. I'm a project manager at Hayner Swanson, doing business at 3 Congress Street here in Nashua. Also with me tonight, I have Jamie Anderson, a project manager at Greenleaf Construction, who's a longtime construction manager for FW Web, and Jose Frankie, who's the general manager at FW Web in Nashua. Here tonight seeking the application and acceptance and approval for a proposed site improvements project for the FW Web property in Nashua, New Hampshire. I'll present the facts of the case and then would be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. The subject property is known to the Nashua Assessor's Office as Map E, Lot 141, and is located at 1 Redmond Street. The property is most visible from the Effie Everett Turnpike, where if you're traveling south, it's very visible just north of exit five. The property is abutted by two cemeteries to the south, the Effie Everett Turnpike to the east, and a combination of office and warehouse uses to the north and to the west. The property measures approximately 8.2 acres in size and is located in a larger PI Park Industrial Zoning District. Moving on to existing conditions, the property was originally developed in the early 1960s as a light industrial use. Raytheon Corporation operated out of the site until the late 1990s, when the, when the property was purchased by FW Web. FW Web is a wholesaler of construction products with a focus on the plumbing and HVAC industries. The site's currently developed and contains 102,000, give or take, square foot building. Web has broken the building into five distinct parts. If, would you mind pulling up the master site plan? Should be the first right under the cover. In the southeast corner of the building contains-
Do you have another copy of this down the board? If she's a hard copy. Sorry.
No problem.
Okay. Thanks.
In the southeast corner of the building contains a 5,700 square foot showroom for Web to showcase their plumbing, plumbing products directly to consumers. The remainder of the southern, or if you're looking on the plans, the left, the left side of the building, approximately 34,000 square feet, is dedicated to a self-storage use where customers can come in and rent self-storage lockers, similar to, you know, a U-Haul recently in Nashua. There's a small portion of the northern half, or if you're looking at the plan, the right side of the building, which is dedicated to what FW Web calls self-serve, more commonly referred to as retail space for plumbing and HVAC technicians to come in, purchase their supplies, and similar to any other retail use. An additional area on the eastern side of the building around kind of where the building kickout is, contains office space for their sales and administrative staff, and the remainder of the northern portion of the building, or approximately 45,000 square feet, is utilized as a warehouse for the storage of their product. In addition to the building, the site contains a large parking lot off the southeast corner of the building for both showroom and retail customers, and an additional parking lot off the southwestern side of the building provides a parking and loading dock space for the self-storage customers. The remainder of the paved areas on the north, northeast, northwest, and northwest sides of the building is fenced in for security purposes and provides both parking for the employees and an outdoor storage area for the larger products that Web sells, such as water tanks, oil tanks, and pipe. The western wall of the warehouse area contains three loading docks and two large overhead doors regularly used for the shipping and delivery of their products. Access to the site is provided via two curb cuts onto Redmond Street. The western curb cut and driveway provides access to the secure outdoor yard storage area and employee parking, and the eastern curb cut and driveway provides access to the two customer-facing parking lots. Generally, the pavement on the site is in variable condition. However, the pavement on the western side of the building is, is in the worst condition and regularly has drainage issues as a result. The remainder of the perimeter areas in the site contained, contained various forested scrub shrub areas. The topography of the site is generally mild. Generally, the building pad sits up a little bit higher than the rest of the site, and the grade generally mildly slopes in all directions to the perimeter of the property. These existing parking lot contain several small low-point leaching structures, but there are no formal drainage practices on the site. Test pits were performed recently on the property and yielded the underlying soils were well-draining, deep sandy soils. And the existing building is serviced by underground gas, electric, water-by-penetrant waterworks, and private septic systems. As part of an update, as part of an effort to update the property, it is proposed to improve several aspects of both the existing site and the building. Interior building improvements include a number of office and retail space updates and other building deferred maintenance items, both on the inside and on the exterior building envelope. The site improvements are primarily focused on the western side of the site. It is proposed to expand the paved parking and outdoor storage area on the western side of the building. As part of this project, two retaining walls are proposed to improve grading and access to the existing low docks, and a new security fence and gate will enclose the expanded outdoor yard storage area and parking. The forested area along Redmond Street will be cleared to provide space for the pavement expansion, a stormwater feature, and improve visibility from Redmond Street. On the eastern side of the building, there is a small site improvement in the small area at the retail entrance. That, this small area will also be reconstructed to provide proper grading and drainage away from the doorway in this location. Two new private subsurface sewage disposal systems are proposed and have both received the necessary approvals from both the Board of Environmental Health and the State Subsurface Bureau. One system will be constructed under the large parking lot off the southeastern corner of the building, and a second system will be constructed in an open area along the western side of the property. The building will continue to be serviced by underground gas, electric, and water-by-penetrant waterworks. Other site improvements generally include curbing, new drainage, and site lighting and landscaping improvements. Our approach to stormwater for this project is to take advantage of the deep sandy soils mentioned previously by promoting recharge of runoff directly into the soil and improve, excuse me, by promoting recharge of the runoff generated by the improved and expanded pavement areas on the western portion of the property. The stormwater runoff from the majority of this area will be captured into curbing and catch basins and piped into one of the two stormwater management areas located on this side of the property. The first is a large subsurface infiltration practice located under the proposed parking and outdoor storage area. This basin will consist of the storm tech chambered system surrounded by a bed of crushed stone. And the second is a surface infiltration basin located adjacent to Redmond Street in the westerly site driveway. Both of these practices have been sized to completely store and infiltrate up to and including the 100-year storm event, and furthermore, provide a formal treatment practice on a site where none previously existed. Additionally, to ensure proper drainage at the improved retail entrance, it is proposed to install a new leach and catch basin. This leach and catch basin will provide the storage and recharge of runoff from the small low point in this area along the side of the building. If successful tonight, our client hopes to begin construction later this fall. We are here tonight requesting three waivers that were detailed in a waiver letter dated June 30th, 2022. Unless the board would like me to read the letter in its entirety, I will ask that the letter be incorporated by reference, and I'm happy to summarize the three requests.
Just about the total parking waiver you're looking for, can you explain the reasons for that waiver?
Yep, absolutely. Do you mind if I just go in order as I summarize, and I'll get that on my second?
I think that's the only one-
Okay. So the, one of the waiver requested tonight is a minimum, a waiver of the minimum amount of parking spaces required on the site. Based on the, the parking matrix, a minimum amount of 178 spaces would be required. The project proposes no change in the amount of parking spaces from the existing 112 spaces that currently exist on the site. FW Web is operated out of the site since the late 1990s, over 25 years, and feels that there's sufficient amount of parking, that there's a sufficient amount of parking space to sustain their business. Constructing the additional 58 spaces provides no real benefit to their business and would add just an unnecessary amount of impervious surface to the site. I'll also note that, that should someday the property change hands, there is additional site area that these 58 spaces likely could be incorporated in some type of building update.
Okay, thanks.
The other two waivers were, were simply a existing condition survey on existing parcels, and the third is a waiver of the requirement to perform a traffic impact analysis, as this is really a site improvements project, and there's no direct change in traffic anticipated. There's no increase in employees or number of customers, expected customers at FW Web can serve as a direct result of this project. I'll also note in the staff report, just two, two minor corrections. We are not seeking an HDES AOT permit as the, the project is under the 100,000 square foot threshold, and there is no longer, the original project contemplated a small building demolition, but no longer, the, the building will not change in terms of total size. In summary, we feel the proposed site improvements projects at the FW Web Nashua project is a responsible development and will help FW Web continue to operate their successful business here in Nashua. Furthermore, we feel that the project meets the goals and regulations of the Nashua Land Use Code. The conditions outlined in the staff report seem reasonable and are agreeable to our client. I will note that on condition seven, as, as I just previously mentioned, this project proposes no change in traffic, and as I just mentioned, we asked for a waiver of the TIR. To that end, we have not received any traffic-related comments, as I, I don't believe that it necessarily applies anymore. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions of the applicant by the board? Pretty straightforward for us, I guess. At this point, I'll open it up to the public then. Is there anybody in the audience here wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? Not hearing any or seeing any? Anybody on Zoom? Not seeing anybody? Okay, I'll give the board one last opportunity to ask any questions of the applicant who are in the hearing. Not hearing any. I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, move into the meeting. Okay, so we've got this site plan before us. It seems pretty straightforward, improvement of sort of the site, looks like a pretty positive impact to me, improving the drainage and some other things like that. Don't see any issues with that. Definitely, Dan, that makes sense, that number seven stipulation is necessary, right?
Yeah, stipulation seven can be removed. Stipulation six, it's a letter from Joe Mandola, and same thing with the title, senior staff engineer, dated July 12th.
Correct. July 12th.
July 12th. Okay. Anybody else have any other comments? Somebody want to make a motion? Rudy? Mr. Riley?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve new business A 22-0102, JNT Investments LLC, FW Web Company, 1 Redmond Street. And that would be with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in the site plan, NRO section 190-146D. And there'll be a total of nine stipulations. The first three of those are waiver requests, the first being a waiver from NRO section 190-279EE, which will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. The second being a waiver request of NRO section 190-198, which will read is not grant, is granted, sorry, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And the third being a waiver of NRO section 190-27900, which again will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulations four and five, as written in the staff report. Stipulation number six will be amended to correct Joe Mandola's title to senior staff engineer and to insert the date of July 12th, 2022. Original stipulation number seven will be removed and- Original stipulation number seven will be removed, and original stipulations eight, nine, and 10 will be renumbered accordingly and read as written in the staff report.
Okay, thank you. So we have that motion to approve case 220102 with the stipulations as stated by Mr. Burley. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. Next up on the agenda, we have case 822-0152. This is ZJBV Properties LLC. Owner is an application acceptance of a proposed one-year extension of two 84-unit apartment buildings and site improvements. This property located at 152 Temple and L Street. So I would ask if anybody from the board had a chance to take a look at this application for extension, and want to make a motion as whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Take a motion that it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Peterson to take jurisdiction of 822-0152. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That's unanimous, so we have jurisdiction. We have somebody from the applicant that wants to just present this site plan extension?
Yes, good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, this is Michael Malinowski from Allen &amp; Major Associates. We are the civil engineers and surveyors for the project. If I can share my screen, I will better bring up the plan. We are here before you to seek a, one-year extension for our site plan approval. The property is located at 159 Temple Street in Nashua and consists of two lots, map 39, lots 31 and 38, with access from Temple Street and Bridge Street. The project was initially for 168 units, consisting of two buildings, one which fronts Temple Street, as you can see here, and another building behind it. As part of the project, 252 total parking spaces will be provided, which meets the city's requirement. Forty-four of those will be covered.
Can you speak up a little bit? We're having a little.
Sorry, on the first floor of this building, with ground floor amenities located on the building that is situated along Temple Street. We had gone through approvals back in 2019 and received approval from the planning board. Since requested two extensions, one in 2019 and one in 2020, that were both granted. In light of the ongoing COVID epidemic and now supply chain issues, the property owner deems it unwise to begin such an endeavor. As much as we would like to begin the project and get much-needed housing within the city of Nashua, we are asking for a one-year extension to stay off construction. The project was fully approved. We do have active AOT permits for drainage. The entire site was fully engineered, including a large subsurface infiltration system to meet the city's requirements for stormwater. All of the utilities will be pulled up Temple Street, and we work closely with Joe Mandola and engineering to satisfy all of their requirements for utility connections and extra work relative to street cutting within Temple Street. I would be happy to open, answer any questions that the board or the public may have for this.
Okay. All right, thanks. So, no changes to the plan, just looking to extend essentially.
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Anybody from the board have any questions on this? So this is, this is extension three?
Number three.
Okay. Yeah, historically, three is about the last, just so, just so you know. You know, I mean, it's up to the board whether we sort of decide on the third, but I'm just saying, you know, in my time with the board, we've sort of gone out to about three before. I'm not sure we've gone beyond that, but we've certainly had some extenuating circumstances, obviously, in the last couple of years that haven't really existed prior to that, so.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that, you know, certainly if, if the applicant were to return in another year and ask for extension, I think at a bare minimum, we'd have to, you know, you know, consider it in a lot more substantive detail, just because, you know, to Chairman's point, you know, the reason that three is typically as far as we go is just because the changes in circumstances, potential changes in, you know, in the land use code, et cetera, you know, create concerns about, you know, whether, whether we really need an updated plan to be able to make an assessment. So I think, just to echo what the chairman said, the applicant should be prepared if they're coming back for an extension after this, that we're going to have to engage in a more substantive review most likely.
But any other questions for the applicant by the board, for anyone to the public? Anybody in the audience or on Zoom at this point have any concerns or questions of the plan? Not hearing any, not seeing any? Okay. For the board, any other questions of the applicant while we're in the hearing?
Do we check on Zoom? I don't think so.
I checked, I did say Zoom too. Yeah, I didn't see anybody. Okay, I'll go ahead and close the hearing then, move to the meeting, so. As I said, yeah, it seems reasonable in light of what's happened over the last few years, but, you know, the city does change and modify, and things happen in the surrounding areas, and obviously, we have a new master plan, and we have some other things going on, so, you know, be my recommendation, we go another year, but, you know, beyond that, we really have to kind of look at it pretty closely. But that's my two cents, so. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, anybody want to make a motion? Just for clarification, are all the stipulations the same?
Yes.
So we could just say an all?
Yeah, all prior conditions are incorporated here, right?
Yeah, that's, that's what the one stipulation is, all prior conditions, yeah.
All right, anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Peterson?
I don't have that paperwork in front of me.
There you go.
I'd like to make a motion that new business project 822-0152 site plan, ZJBV Properties, be approved for a one-year extension.
Do you want to say something to the stipulation that's on the report? It's just the all prior conditions.
We'd also like to add that the plan meets site plan NRO 190-146D and 190-23F to meet the one condition as stipulated in the staff report.
Okay. So we have that motion to approve 822-0152 with the one stipulation regarding all prior conditions as approval incorporated herein, made part of the plan. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Looking forward to working with you guys in the future.
Appreciate it. Yeah, moving on, so case number 822-0137, this is John J. Flatley Company owner. This is an application and acceptance of proposed amendment to previously approved conservation subdivision plan to decrease the amount of units from 58 to 49 and remove the clubhouse, property is El Dozer Road. So with regard to the plan, has anybody from the board had a chance to take a look at this and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Peterson?
I'd like to take a motion that new business 822-0137 plan amendment is ready to be accepted by the board.
Okay, so we have a motion to take jurisdiction of 822-0137. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That's unanimous. Okay, so we have jurisdiction. And we'll go ahead and present the application.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, my name is Chad Brannon. I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Our office is located at 206 Elm Street in Milford, New Hampshire. With me tonight is Kevin Walker with the John Flatley Company, and also with us via Zoom, I believe, is our traffic engineer, Jason Plord from VHB. We are before you this evening seeking a subdivision approval or amendment, as you stated, Mr. Chairman, for a 49-lot conservation subdivision on the north portion of Gateway Hills, which is currently owned by the John Flatley Company. As the board may recall, we were before you back in May of this year, and at that time, we were proposing a 58-lot development. After that hearing, or actually during that hearing, we heard a lot of testimony from abutting property owners, and then after the hearing, there was some additional discussion which was ultimately shared with Mr. Flatley, and there were some decisions made to consider a reduced development. Primarily, some of the main comments that were received at the meeting and after the meeting pertain to some concerns relative to trying to reduce some of the units closest to Spindelwick Drive along where the main access will be to the development, and that's in this location here. So we proposed to remove five units in that location. And then we also took a look at the clubhouse, because there was some comments relative to this not being compatible with the neighborhood, because we would have a clubhouse and it would be a different type of development. And so after looking into that, Mr. Flatley decided that we would remove the clubhouse as well. Upon looking at a couple other lots, we made some modifications. We removed one of the homes closest to the highway. The decision was made that, you know, that home would be a little closer to the highway than Mr. Flatley would like, so we removed that one. And then there was a smaller lot in here that was removed, and that was actually a lot that, you know, we evaluated as far as, you know, the size of a home that could be put on it, and it was a lot that actually the Conservation Commission voiced some concerns about, so it was, it was, a decision was made to remove that one. And then we just consolidated two of the lots that were at this intersection here. There was some, again, some, some setback in, in topographic constraints there, and so the goal was to, you know, address some of the comments, and then modify, we modified the density to 49 units. We made no changes to any of the roadway design. We made no changes to any of the stormwater management design. We really have made no changes to any of the infrastructure design, other than removing the service connections to the, the lots that we're proposing to remove. We have had a chance to work with the fire department on really resolving the comments that they had that were part of the condition of approval the last time. They really wanted us to address them this time around, and so we did. That consisted of naming the roads, upgrading the emergency access from this cul-de-sac to be 20 feet in width, removing the gates, and working with them on providing a turning apparatus throughout the development. The roadway that we're proposing here, just like the last approval, meets all city standards. So, you know, we felt pretty comfortable that it was gonna, you know, the, the fire truck was gonna maneuver appropriately, but they did want to see that, so we provided them with an exhibit showing that as well. We are asking for the same waivers that were granted with the prior application. Those pertain to the drafting standards as we have. One of our sheets is larger than 50 scale, and then the other standard has to do with detailing features within 1,000 feet of the project area. And I'd be happy to go into those in more detail. In general, this is a density reduction, no changes to utilities or stormwater management, so now those systems are just slightly overdesigned. We didn't think there was a real benefit in, in, you know, trying to tweak those designs down. We have no objections to any of the outstanding engineering comments, and we look forward to, you know, addressing those, hopefully, if we're successful this evening. We also have no objections to any of the city staff comments and recommendations. So, in the interest of time, I'll keep the presentation brief and just answer any questions that the board may have. I know it's been a long, long night for everybody, so, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so, Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the, you know, recommended stipulations reference comments by Joe Mandola from May 12th. I recall at the time of we made those comments or he made those comments, we were confused about the disposition of the ownership of the roadway right away and that sort of thing. So, is it still proposed that the roads are going to be private roads?
Yes.
And then subsequently, all other infrastructure will be private as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions by the board? Okay. At this point, I'll open up to the audience. Anybody in the audience, either here and not many people left here, but come on up and state your name and address for the record and ask any question or comments you may have.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Derek Tebow. I live at 9 Emerson Road. I'm the alderman for Ward Eight. So, you know, we had quite a big turnout last time when it was the 58-home subdivision, and, you know, in general, my ward is probably 80/20, you know, especially the people, the butters around it against any building really over there. You put two houses over there, and they probably wouldn't be happy with it, which I understand completely. It really changes the landscape as now they're going, the road goes basically in between two houses, so that's really going to change the neighborhood. But I do think that overall, this plan is better. Getting rid of the clubhouse, getting rid of a bunch of houses will definitely spread that out a little bit more, and, you know, like I said, people aren't always going to be happy with it, but I think it's more palatable in some ways. You know, the, I guess the only concern I had is going from 58 to 49 and having the application go in before 7-1 keeps it from being part of the inclusionary zoning, which means affordable housing does not have to be put into this subdivision at all. So I thought that a little suspicious when I saw that all of a sudden it changed and it went like that, so, you know, these are going to be big houses, and they're going to be big-money houses, and not to have anybody come in that can afford these as a young couple or whatever, it was a little disappointing to me, but I think overall, the Ward Eight, people living in this area will be happier that at least they've reduced the amount of houses. I assume now, and Mr. Hudson asked the question about private roads, so I'm assuming that means garbage pickup will be private, snowplowing will be private.
Correct.
And one thing I would like to ask also is if I could be in the know, or at least maybe Director Sullivan could give me information about, as this is being built, if you guys do approve this, what the updates are on it, so I can give that back to my ward and know that, you know, it's starting on this date, or, you know, we're going to be finished on this, that kind of information, so I could relay that to the constituents, that would be great. And I don't know what you decided on street names, but it would be great if, if they could do something less common and maybe, you know, something more historical with Nashua, maybe the four officers that have been killed here in Nashua, maybe honor them, or maybe some other historic names that would be just a different. or maybe some other historic names that would be just different than the same common names we get all the time. So overall, I think this is a better plan, so, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else in the audience, we shouldn't speak opposition or concern or have a comment on the plan? Okay, don't want to hear anybody. Guess I'll leave it up to the applicant. Do you need any further comment rebuttal? Certainly have that option.
We don't have any further comment, Mr. Chairman, unless the board has any questions relative to those comments.
No, I, I guess I, I'll just clarify with staff and stuff. I think street naming and stuff, that's in a private development, that's sort of a thing between the developer and, I'm not sure. I think there's some issues like with fire, right? They have to approve it because it can't be the same as something else, but, yeah, they can hear you, so we'll leave it at that.
You can suggest it to the.
If there were any changes to it, I think it would have to go back through fire, that's all, right? So, any other comments on that, Mr. Hudson?
Not on that, I have a question for staff.
Go ahead, yeah.
My question is to the inclusionary zoning point that was made. I understand they're below whatever threshold currently, that's currently required. If this subdivision were to come back, you know, with a request for an amendment to add back those lots at a later date, would they fall under that inclusionary zoning? Would it end up equating to be the same thing as it would have been otherwise? I just, I just.
Actually, I was going to add a stipulation at the end. If the current proposal to create a reduced 49-unit conservation subdivision is approved by the planning board, the previously approved 58-unit conservation subdivision approval on May 19th will in turn be revoked. Take care of it.
Yeah, I think so. I was just looking forward to, I mean, it's, it's a question I can ask another day perhaps. I'm just curious what happens if later they want to come back and request, you know, further subdivision, go back to the original plan basically, as an amendment to this plan, if that would trigger the, then would trigger the inclusionary zoning because this, because this development, you know, was approved under inclusionary zoning ordinance and at the time, you know, I didn't know if that would reset you back to the other, but that's a technical question, I could take it up to staff at a later date.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions by the board while we're in the hearing? The applicant? Sorry, staff? Okay, make your staff. So I'll go ahead and close the hearing, move to the meeting. So, yeah, we, so we've seen this before, seems like it's going in the direction of favorability of the abutters, albeit, you know, there's still some concern, but I think, you know, I had some comments earlier that certainly the subdivision is consistent with the master plan, you know, we, this is very specific in our master plan that we were trying to get more housing, single-family as well is very limited. So I think it still complies well with the master plan and some of the goals within the master plan, so. So I don't see any changes here being negative, it seems positive, with the exception, I guess, there's less housing, but maybe that's a reasonable balance, so.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to say, I mean, it, you know, on the one hand, you know, it would be nice to see it within the inclusionary zoning and to see the more housing, but from the abutter perspective, you know, it's like, I think, you know, if they, if they, if they would prefer, relatively speaking, less housing, then, you know, that's going to result in, you know, it's not going to be an inclusionary zoning, so I agree, I mean, it's, I mean, I thought the original proposal was, was pretty well balanced. You know, this, if anything, reduces the impact on the abutters, so.
Any other discussion by the board? Anybody want to make a motion? Can't wait. Mr. Peterson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve new business 822-0137 plan amendment conservation Know that it meets subdivision NRO 190-138G with the following stipulations. Stipulation one, a waiver of 190-282B9. In the existing conditions plan is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Waiver number two, a waiver of 190-279B, which requires certain drafting standards, is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number three, as written. Stipulation number four, as written. Stipulation number five, prior to the chair signing the plan, all comments in a letter from Joe Mendola, Senior Staff Engineer, dated May 12th, 2022, shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the Division of Public Works. And stipulation number six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, up to 16, as written.
Okay.
And if we can also add the 17th about revoking the previous site plan?
Okay.
Subdivision plan.
So the wording of that?
If the current proposal to create a reduced 49-unit conservation subdivision is approved by the planning board, the previously approved 58-unit conservation subdivision approved on May 19th, 2022, will in turn be revoked.
Is that wording okay?
Is that wording?
Perfect. Okay, so that's 17. Okay, so we have that, we have that motion to approve 822-0137, the 17 stipulations as stated. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, that motion passes. Thank you very much. Yep, thanks. Okay, we're getting down to the weeds here. So next up, a review of tentative agenda. If anybody had a chance, was there one in there?
There is, yeah.
Yeah. Anything in there that looks like there's any regional impact? Only a couple new. Ten residences on Buck Meadow. It's not really. Anybody want to make a motion on those? Mr. Riley?
Chair, I would like to make a motion that having reviewed the tentative agenda, determined that there are no proposals of regional impact.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Riley, no proposals of regional impact. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Next up, looks like we have a couple folks on Capital Improvement Committee that need for reappointment here, so reminder, Capital Improvement Committee, do that once a year, generate the sort of capital improvement plan that gets sent on to the mayor and the alderman for consideration while we rate. Larry and Bob Cannaway have both been on the committee for as long as I've been on it, quite a while.
Me too.
Longer than I've been on it, for sure. So both, I think, pretty worthy for continuance. I would recommend a motion to approve those. Does anybody want to make that? Mr. Riley?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to recommend and approve the two nominees to the Capital Improvement Committee.
Okay.
Lawrence Zatell and Robert Cannaway.
All right, thank you. So we have that motion to reappoint Lawrence and Bob as listed until the August 1st, 2024. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion passes. So that kind of wraps up our, if I don't have any other discussion items, I don't think anybody has any, I don't have any at this time. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, so a motion to adjourn by Mr. Hirsch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes and we adjourned at 10:50. Thank you, everyone.